Opening statement. Uh, we accept that this is a special meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on October the sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven thirty P M. in the municipal complex. During Section thirteen in the Open Public Meeting Act, I took notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the Sunshine Notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. It's what a notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex, and by translating a copy of the notice to the Princeton packet, sign of poppy, define, Trentonian Comcast media, and by filing a copy to the clerk of Princeton on the fifth day of October, two thousand and eighteen. Could you call the roll for us, please, Claudia?
Mr. Cohen.
Right.
Ms. Coulson.
Here.
Mr. Davich. Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Schreiber.
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum. Mr. Valvanes.
Here.
Ms. Chen.
Here.
Chairman Royce.
Here.
Thank you.
Um, I don't think there's any real difference in the procedure we're going to follow this evening. This is a meeting which is a continuation of, I believe, two previous hearings on this same case. And, uh, what I would like to do is to, uh, get the, um, staff of the borough to, uh, give its own evaluation of the case to begin with. Uh, next, I will ask, uh, the applicant, uh, to present the appropriate witnesses and make their case. Uh, thirdly, uh, if there are members of the audience who are here to, uh, talk to the case, I will invite them to do so. They should come and sign up on the sheet on the lecture, and if they really want to do that. And then the board will, uh, ask its questions of all groups in, in one cluster. I think that will keep everything more in order. So, um, I guess, Mr. Bridger, are you going to start the presentations for?
Well, I'll let, uh, Dan Dobremilsky do his planning review, and I'll just go over a quick, uh, review of the, uh, changes to the plan that the applicant has submitted at this point. So, Dan will take over, um, and then I'll just give a brief synopsis of the variances, and then we'll go on from there.
Mr. Dobremilsky, before you begin, I think I should probably swear in. Did we lose Mr. West? Okay, okay. Um, I'll swear on you, Mr. Dobremilsky, Mr. Bridger, and Mr. Stankis. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. Can you hear me good, well? I'm Dan Dobremilsky, planner, landscape architect, uh, for the municipality. I submitted a report, uh, on October sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and, uh, the initial, um, two and a half pages of that report are a lot of, uh, overview and background information. So, to kind of provide this initial, um, summary or analysis of what, what this is before you tonight, I'm gonna really jump to the page three, comment five, to get right to the meat of what we're talking about. Uh, so if you wanna follow along, I'm gonna start on page three, comment five A, under the heading use D variance. Um, this applicant is proposing the construction of a senior assisted living residence at the corner North Harrison and Taroon Roads on a tract currently zoned for RSM residential senior sixty-two-plus age market with affordable housing set aside. The proposed use is not a permitted use in this district, and therefore a D one use variance relief is required. Pursuant to the municipal land use law, um, a D variance requires the applicant to demonstrate to the board that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment of the intent of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Typically, a D variance applicant must also demonstrate to the board by showing of special reasons that the site is peculiarly suited for the particular use being proposed. However, the standard of proof required to meet the positive and negative criteria is different for an inherently beneficial use. To define inherently beneficial, uh, is provided in the law as means a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. Such a use includes, but is not limited to, a hospital, school, childcare facility, group home, wind, solar, or PV energy facility or structure. It has been held that nursing homes and hospitals are uses which are so similar, both physically and functionally, that they should be treated the same for zoning purposes, and therefore an inherently beneficial use. Where a use is deemed inherently beneficial, the standards of proof to grant a use variance are relaxed to the extent that the positive criteria are presumed satisfied, as, as the use is considered to serve the general community welfare. Additionally, the criteria to be considered with regard to the negative criteria are altered. The SECA court found that boards were to go through these four steps, known as the SECA balancing test, to determine whether an inherently beneficial use meets the statutory So the first step is establish the magnitude of the public interest at stake. Inherently beneficial uses in and among themselves are deemed so valuable that boards are encouraged to recognize legitimate regional needs for them as well as local. However, the court noted that inherently beneficial uses are generally limited in number within a single municipality. Where a need that a proposed use meets is already satisfied, it may no longer be necessary to consider the use inherently beneficial. For the purpose of this right now, I'm not gonna cite all the court, uh, hearings or findings, and they're in the report. Um, so just so you know, I'll just skip over those for the, for this summary at this point. Um, so getting to the magnitude of the public interest at stake, the inherently beneficial part for an assisted living facility. As noted in four B in the beginning of my report, there are local and nearby assisted living and memory care residences in Princeton and nearby. The applicant should demonstrate that a need for this facility exists that is not currently be, being served by other facilities. I believe they are required to, uh, apply for or ultimately get a certificate of need from the state, so there could be questions as to where that process is, is at. Uh, it also, we, in addition to the, some of the statistics I provided in the report about local facilities that exist or, uh, in the region, is also noted that this use is permitted in Princeton as a conditional use in other zones, and on page two, comment three A, those zones are listed. The second step is to identify any detrimental impacts that may result from the proposed use. In this step, the board must take into consideration whether the proposed use would have any detrimental impacts upon the public good or would impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Regarding the substantial detriment to the public good, prong of the negative criteria, the court affirmed that the focus is on the impact of the proposed use variance upon the adjacent properties, and whether or not it will cause such damage to the character and neighborhood as to constitute substantial detriment to the public good. If you look on page two of the report, comments three and B, it talks about what the planning board was considering in dealing with this zone and some of the senior housing zones in the community, and it mimics many of these things, talks about trying to balance the, the impact upon the neighborhood. The applicant in their, the documents they submitted with this application, the variance addendum was the, the title of the document, included the following in their proofs regarding this part of this step. They indicated that the proposed use will be compatible with the existing mix of uses in the area, including the Princeton Medical Group's medical center and the surrounding residential properties. They also indicated, and I quote, "The form, proposed form of specialized residential use fits within the surrounding land use, including permitted uses in the RSM zone," this zone. "In addition, the architectural style of the building will be aesthetically pleasing and complimentary of surrounding properties. The proposed facility will also have generous setbacks and significant landscape improvements." So, my comments. As noted in comments number one and two elsewhere in the report, which summarized what the bill, what's being proposed with the site plan that they submitted, uh, along with this bifurcated application, meaning that they're really applying for the D variance at this time. This building will greatly dwarf the bulk size of a typical single-family residential home nearby. This proposing eighty-two thousand square foot building, the nearby residential homes are two thousand to five thousand square feet in size. That's about nine hundred percent difference in size. The setbacks exceed the RSM standards by three inches to the parking lot proposed along, or shown along Taroon, and fourteen feet to the building along North Harrison Street. Although the main building, the five-hundred-foot-long facade of the building along Taroon is setback eighty feet to ninety feet, within that setback are, is underground storage, and we, within both setbacks, the Taroon and the Harrison Street, underground storage of, for detention basins, stormwater, drainage swales, walkways, pergolas, portico chair, signs, drive aisles, and parking. All these are within the setbacks. That greatly limits the ability to develop effective landscape improvements. The plans have suggested the preservation of existing mature pine hedgerow along Taroon. However, it is my opinion that this is not possible relative to the proximity and extent of construction activity necessary to build all those improvements I just described. The roots under those trees will definitely be impacted, and I cannot see how it could actually be possible to save those trees with the proposed improvements. The adjacent medical office building actually offers a much greater setback and landscape buffer. It measures two to eight times greater than what's being proposed here, and the building is well buffered from the streets. In this step, we're still in the second step, talking about the detrimental impacts that may result from the proposed use. You, you get into the, is there a substantial detriment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance? The Medici Court established that municipalities should make zoning decisions by ordinance rather than by variance. The court stated with regards to the substantial detriment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance prong of the negative criteria, that the added requirement that boards of adjustment must reconcile proposed use variance with the proposed provisions of the master plan and zoning ordinance will reinforce to conviction expressed in Ward versus Scott court case, that the negative criteria constitute an essential safeguard to prevent improper exercise of variance power. So this, weighing this step is essential for this board to safeguard against wielding improper exercise of variance power. The court in TWC Realty versus Zoning Board affirmed in a later case, found that it is a zoning board's obligation to hear all variance applications, but to refuse to grant a variance of negative, on negative criteria bounds, where it believes the variance request would amount to an irrigation of authority from the governing body and the planning Although the zone plan clearly suggests a higher-density senior neighborhood as a transition between the commercial and residential uses, as noted in comment three D of my report, it is noted that the governing body chose to prohibit assisted living use from this zone. And in four, in the four districts where permitted as a conditional use, the density allowed in those zones is substantially less than what is proposed here, and the densities are listed in comment three A. The proposed gross density here exceeds permitted, the permitted by seventy percent. The floor area, as shown on the plans they submitted, the site plans, exceeds the permitted by a hundred and ninety-eight percent, and the impervious coverage exceeds the permitted by eight percent. As noted in comments one D and one E above, these measurements suggest substantial deviance from the zone ordinance. The Acorn Glen assisted living facility in Princeton Town, in Princeton municipality, which is of similar size to this proposal, was constructed on a property that is double the area of this property, ten acres versus four and a half acres. The purpose of the master plan is to map out the overall planning goals and strategies for the municipality, including identifying locations for relatively broad categories and more specific uses. In comments three A and B above, the planning board has offered goals and strategies suggesting a diverse, yet balanced, mix of uses that exhibit neighborhood compatibility and promote a small-town image that is the essence of Princeton. This tract was specifically discussed in the master plan, see comment three D above, and amongst the reasons for proposing senior housing in this location is the proximity to transportation, shopping, and medical services. However, as noted in comments four A and C of my report, assisted living and memory care residents are likely to be extremely limited in ability to take advantage of the proximity afforded by this site. Thus, one of the criteria for conditional use in other zones is the provision of transportation services. The applicant should rectify the proposed use variance with these goals and strategies of the master plan. Moving on to this third step of the four steps. The board is to determine whether any detrimental effect can be reduced by imposing reasonable conditions. In this discussion, the board may wish to review impacts of the proposed use on the adjacent property owners and how such impacts may be mitigated. The applicant has suggested that an aesthetically pleasing architectural building style and significant landscape improvements can be implemented to mitigate the impacts. It is not clear that the bulk and scale of the building, as depicted, as well as the dramatic removal of mature woodland, can be mitigated by architectural style and an overall reduced quantity of trees at a much smaller size and maturity, post versus pre-construction. Going on to this fourth step for the board. You're to weigh the positive criteria and negative criteria and determine whether the grant of a variance would be substantially detrimental to the public good or would substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zone ordinance. The applicant has stated in the variance addendum that the use will serve the best interests of Princeton, as it will help to meet the need for this specialized form of senior housing for a governed, growing segment of Princeton's population. The applicant should demonstrate evidence of the specialized need, including a discussion regarding the issuance or application for a certificate of need from the state. The board must weigh the positive criteria and negative criteria and determine whether, on balance, the grant of the variance will cause substantial detriment to the public good and the zone plan, and thus represent an irrigation of authority from the governing body and planning board. The board's resolution should contain sufficient findings based upon proof submitted to satisfy a reviewing court that the board has analyzed the master plan and zoning ordinance, and determined that the governing body's prohibition of the proposed use is not incompatible with a grant of variance. If the board cannot reach such a conclusion, it should deny the variance. You were gonna handle the secondary? So, that's, that gets to the heart of the D variance. Derek is going to talk about the secondary relief as it relates to his report.
Good evening. I just wanted to go over some of the revisions the applicant has put forth in this plan. Originally proposed to construct a three-story, eighty-two thousand five hundred square foot, eighty-nine-unit senior living building near the corner of Terhune and North Harrison, and the project originally contained a hundred and ten beds. Site improvements included fifty-three parking spaces, including three accessible spaces, a loading dock, trash enclosure, drop-off area, gazebo, sidewalks, and landscaping. The project required two new curb cuts on Terhune, which would provide access to the parking lot, trash enclosure, and loading area. Based on import, put from the board and the public, the applicant has revised the plan as now proposing a two-story, eighty-two thousand two hundred square foot, eighty-four-unit senior living building with a hundred and twenty-four beds. Site improvements include forty-two parking spaces, including three accessible, loading area, trash enclosure, drop-off area, gazebo, sidewalks, and landscaping, and the project will also require two new curb cuts on Terhune to provide access to the parking lot and the trashing closure in the loading area. As noted in Dan's memo, a D one variance is required for a use that's not permitted in that zone. A D four variance is required to permit a floor area ratio that exceeds the maximum permitted in the zone. The original FAR was forty-two thousand or eight, eighty-two thousand five hundred and seventy square feet. The revised plan is forty-one point nine percent, or eighty-two thousand two hundred. The maximum in this zone is twenty-five percent, or twenty thousand six hundred and four square feet. We ask that the applicant also address any attic area that might qualify as FAR, um, in the, in the attic area. Um, the D five zone, the project exceeds the maximum permitted gross density, which is limited to eleven units per acre, or forty-nine point five nine units. The original proposal, uh, included a total number of units was eighty-nine units, or nineteen point seven three units per acre. The revised plan reduces the number to eighty-four, or eighteen point six three units per acre. A use variance pursuant to NJ SA colon, or forty colon fifty-five, D dash seventy-five is required to exceed the permitted density. Initially, the applicants were seeking a D six variance for height that exceeded the maximum height in the zone. They've reduced the building height to thirty-four feet, eleven and a half inches, and there is no variance required for height at this point. Um, there are still some bulk variances, the parking stall size, uh, we, ten B two eighty-four requires a size of nine by eighteen. However, the, uh, the ordinance has been revised, and that is the permitted size of a parking stall, so there's no variance for a parking stall. There's some sign ordinances. One ground sign is permitted, maximum size is ten square feet. The proposal is sixteen square feet, that's a setback, um, or that's a variance, excuse me, the required setback is fifteen, the proposed is five, that's a variance, and the maximum height is seven, and the sign complies, it's three point five feet high. Minimum rear yard setback, section ten B three sixty-four F four requires a twenty-yard setback. Um, originally, this was proposed to be eighteen point eight, and the rear yard setback has been increased to twenty point twenty, twenty point two feet, and therefore a variance is not required. The minimum front yard setback on Harrison, uh, in accordance with section ten B three sixty-four F four requires a fifty-foot setback. Originally, a thirty-nine point seven setback was proposed. Um, the setback has now been increased to sixty-three point eight six, and that eliminates that variance. The height to setback on Harrison, the requirement was one point five to one. Um, originally, the proposed setback was zero point eight six to one. Uh, the building height has been reduced, and this variance has been eliminated. The maximum height to setback on Terhune, again, a one point five to one was required. Originally, this was zero point five zero eight to one. The building height has been reduced, and this variance is not required any longer either. The parking plan has been revised initially. Fifty-three spaces were proposed. Um, forty-eight have been, um, it's, the, the current plan reduces that to forty-eight. The applicant should address the, the number of, uh, staff and patients to provide testimony for the parking variance. The parking setback to the property line requires a twenty-foot setback. The applicant is proposing an approximately three-foot setback against the southern property line. This is a variance. Parking between the building and the street in accordance with that ten B three sixty-four, section F five does not allow parking between the street and the building. The applicant is proposing parking in this area between the building and Terhune, and a variance is required. And finally, impervious coverage, um, the section allows for a maximum impervious coverage of forty percent. The applicant is proposing forty-three point five one percent, and that requires a variance. That's a recap of the variances. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them. Thank you.
Uh, Brian Stankis of IH Engineers, the board's traffic consultant. Uh, just briefly, IH reviewed the application materials and prepared a report dated October ninth. Am I, is that better? I'll try to keep it there. Our report indicated, again, our report addresses the traffic study, the parking calculations, and the few site plan issues. Uh, in general, we concurred with the methodology, uh, used to prepare the traffic impact study. We did request some technical clarifications and updates. Our understanding is that the applicant's traffic engineer intends to address those. And I guess, uh, with regard to the, uh, again, I'll echo what, what, uh, Mr. Bridger said about the employees, uh, as they pertain to the, uh, the ordinance parking calculation. We'd like to hear that information. Uh, and I guess, uh, our, uh, our site plan review, uh, one of the issues that was concerning is the short length of driveway at the medical office building. There's a short distance between the intersection and the, the T intersection on the site. That appears to be largely driven by the proximity of the building to, to Terhune Road. And I guess that, that might be a little more technical detail than is generally heard here, but I, I think with regard to setbacks and, and that, we'd like to, we'd like to hear some discussion of that.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the group to say anything? All right. So, do we take over at this point?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mark Holy Castro. Thanks for having us back. We have all of our witnesses here this evening. We have provided legal notice, and that is in order. I think your, your counsel has confirmed that legal notice is in order.
I can confirm that, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. There have been a lot of questions raised by your professionals, so I ask that you bear with us. We simply have to go through the many questions that have been raised. Um, even today, we received a couple of questions from your professionals, um, and we are prepared to respond in kind. So I'd like to call, uh, Mr. Jerry Liang, our first witness.
Sir, we'll swear you, and I know you were swearing, but we'll swear you again, again, tonight if you'd raise your right hand. You swear, affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Please state your name again for the record and your title, Mr. Liang.
Great. My name is Jerry Liang, L I A N G. I'm the Senior Vice President of Development and Investments at Sunrise Senior Living.
And what's your, what's your role at Sunrise, uh, currently and in the past?
Great. So, I've been with the company for over eleven years now, and my current role is to build, find locations for, assess the proper suitability, and to try to obtain approvals for specific locations to build new Sunrise projects.
So in part, you're a site, uh, expert site finder for this particular assisted living use, is that true?
That's correct. Um, we have recently, over the last few years, completed successful rezonings of five new Sunrise projects in the state of New Jersey, and I cover a number of other jurisdictions outside of New Jersey.
Projects identical to that, or virtually identical to that that's proposed before this board, is that correct?
That's correct.
Approximately, how many sites have you been involved with in your career, assisted living sites, in one way or the other?
Yeah. As a whole, Sunrise currently operates about three hundred and twenty communities across U.S., Canada, and U.K. I have probably touched in one form or manner or another, somewhere in the order of over two hundred of them. somewhere in the order of over two hundred of them.
In terms of needs analysis, that's also part of your charge for Sunrise. Is that true?
Absolutely. So, a fundamental...
Maybe expand upon that, because it's been raised in some of the professional letters, obviously. What is your role, and at what level, and how up the chain do you go, and who do you report to? And what's your role as far as determining the actual need for this site and others in New Jersey and across the country and the world?
Absolutely. So, there's a couple of files that we'll be happy to share and discuss, but just broadly in summary, my role is to sift through all of the demographic data and to determine some of the correct areas that have the proper balance, not just of demand factors, such as the prevalence of seniors or caregivers, but also balancing them off against supply factors. There are a number of markets throughout the United States where one would consider there to be a robust number of seniors, but due to this high degree of competition, they're not suitable markets for development. So, as such, Sunrise, for example, has no development projects ongoing in markets such as Chicago, which is one of the larger metros in the United States because of that. Whereas here in New Jersey, we have a number of projects that are both are under construction development, as well as that we're in pursuit of. And it's my job to properly both review that information and perform that assessment in order to submit that to our investment committees and ultimately our board of directors for approval.
So, I would offer this witness as a needs expert in this field, Mr. Chairman. Are there any questions about your qualifications in that regard?
Mr. Paul Castro, could you clarify, what are you offering as an expert in?
A needs expert for this particular project before the board. Which, as you know, is a very low standard in the reported decisions. And obviously, he's got significant experience in New Jersey and across the country and the world.
Oh, but...
But if there are questions about that expertise, he's here.
But that's his job at Sunrise. He works for Sunrise, trying to get approvals. So, you're not offering him as an independent expert?
I am, actually. And there are cases to that end that we can brief for you after the fact. You need not be an independent outside of the corporation to be an expert.
But you're saying he's an expert in Sunrise projects?
No, I didn't say that.
All right. What are you saying then? You're saying...
Needs expert for this particular project or type of project that is before this board.
All right. So, you're offering me as an expert in determining whether, shall we say, there's a demographic need for assisted...
An overall need for this particular project. But not just for Sunrise. He's an expert in that field.
For assisted living projects?
For this product, yes. Assisted living...
And memory care?
And memory care, yes.
Well...
It's a very low standard. I don't want to speak for you. If we disagree, let's get on with it. But it's a very low bar. And he is one of the experts in the country, the premier assisted living provider. So, we feel very confident about it. I would not offer him as an expert if that were not the case.
What is your educational background?
So, I have both a bachelor's and a master's from Johns Hopkins University in international relations and a specialty in finance.
In finance?
Do you see problems with that?
Well, I guess my only concern is, I honestly don't know what the standard is that you're proffering here. You're simply saying that because for eleven years he's done this job for Sunrise, he...
Well, he's had experience in hundreds of projects.
For Sunrise.
I don't know why you're emphasizing that. It doesn't matter for whom. Sunrise is one of the world leaders, so it doesn't matter that it's, would you rather it be a lesser provider that's not...
No, no.
And I think the law speaks for itself. And so, we'd be happy, if you want to reject him as an expert, we're going to proceed anyway. We would like the board's determination. If you're going to reject this witness as an expert, we would like that on the record.
Mr. Floyd?
Yeah, I have a question. Does Sunrise ever commission market studies by some, by, you know, an appraiser market study person outside of Sunrise?
On occasion, we've done larger macro market studies, but generally for individual projects, we do not.
Because I'm used to seeing market studies.
That is not the norm for individual projects across the country.
And that's not what you're offering, right?
I'm sorry?
You're not offering a market study. You're just offering testimony by a VP.
Not by VP, by an expert in needs analysis for this product, who happens to be VP, also.
I think the issue for me is whether or not your in-house expert is unbiased in his assessment of the market and the market need.
That's for you to determine and be guided accordingly.
I think it would be easier for us...
If you're going down that road, counsel, I'm not going to speak for you. That's a dangerous road.
Employed by the company.
Sorry?
I think it would seem a little bit more likely that the person would be independent if they were not a high-level employee of the company.
We've been down this road with other boards, so that's all we have to offer. So, we would call a vote on this issue, and we're here to answer any questions you have.
Can I have a, can I ask a question? In making your determinations of needs for projects of this type, do you, other than market studies, do you employ any other expert reports or analysis in making a determination, how much of, and what role do you have in generating those reports and finalizing that analysis? Said a different way, are you presented with a series of options, and you select an option in your role as an executive of the company? Or are you inherently tied into the process of actually generating the reports and, you know, making a determination in that regard?
So, it's a great question. Not entirely sure how, the way it's asked, but let me just explain that I am deeply involved in the assessment of the actual underlying data. We use third-party services in assistance for things such as the sourcing of the actual demographic information, so Claritas and other service providers for projection of census information. And then we use other providers on the supply side, such as Nickmap, which is an industry standard that provides all of the existing supply and then new supply data. And so, utilizing those outside resources, we then are able to coalesce that into our own internal calculus as to what makes sense or doesn't make sense to do. Thank you.
Do we see any real problem hearing this witness? Or as expert?
Personally, I don't have a problem if he were to be deemed to be an expert, but I do think it's wholly appropriate and within the scope of our analysis to determine the bias and position from which he is presenting the information as an expert. And that can be utilized in mitigating or accepting the information provided.
Yeah, okay. We have to make a decision at this point as to whether we want to accept information from him. We have always got the ability to think of it critically once we've heard it.
I mean, I would move to accept him as an expert.
Okay. Is that an agreeable thing for the board? Okay, then we'll accept him as an expert.
That's a yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Unless he proves otherwise.
I doubt it. So, you have some comments you'd like to address with respect to need and other issues. Is that true?
Yes, absolutely. So, Chairman Royce, members of the board, members of the public, thank you for having us back again. We have brought all of our various expert witnesses tonight, and we hope to be able to conclude tonight. It's been a number of months since we've last met, and so I'm not going to reiterate all of the previous testimony I've offered regarding our use and what it is that we do. But I would like to just briefly recapture that, that summary of, our intention for this site is to provide what we believe is deeply needed core assisted living and dementia care services. And what we, excuse me, what we do are provision of activities of daily living, and these include services such as assistance with bathing, assistance with dressing, assistance with taking of medications, and assistance with toileting, as well as programming for dementia care. We have spent a great deal of time working on a design for this project in order to best utilize a fairly unique site in dimension and to do so in a way that best considers all of our surrounding neighbors. We've had multiple meetings with said neighbors, as well as multiple meetings with members and members of your municipality. And we've solicited quite a few opinions. And to be very honest, we've created multiple versions of our designs. I think probably we're on version number eight now.
We've met with the professionals as well.
We've met with the professionals on multiple occasions as well.
And officials.
And officials as well. That is correct. And so, in each time subsequent to these meetings, we continue to refine and refine and adjust the project itself. Which brings us to today, which is, as some of your staff has so expertly described, the project is now different than when we had first met. The size of it has been reduced. The height of the building has been reduced. The number of units have been reduced. What had previously been too tall as a three-story building is now within the required height limit at thirty-five feet. In fact, the height of the building to the roof slab is now actually only twenty-five feet. And so, in that sense, it's actually not wholly inconsistent with some of the new two-story homes that are being built in the area. I actually have a couple of new renderings to show you in order to better describe this, which I'm going to put on the screen behind you, as well as on the canvas right over there.
So, this is a new exhibit. Is that true?
Yes.
So, we'll introduce it into the record, Mr. Chairman. I believe it would be A fourteen. If my records are...
Correct.
Correct. And maybe you can describe A fourteen for the board and the members of the public, please?
Great. So, A fourteen, excuse me. A fourteen is an artistic rendering of our project from the lighted intersection at Harrison and Terhune. And the orientation of this is to help best capture where I think a lot of the public view is going to be. And I don't have before us some of the previous versions, but I think some of you may remember that what had originally been proposed here was a three-story building that was significantly closer to the corner. In fact, the building originally was oriented towards the corner itself with the parking behind the building closer towards a shopping center. To that extent, I think it would have been more consistent with one of the rules regarding parking being in the rear. However, after much consideration and further meetings with both the public and here, it became fairly clear that, for numerous reasons, it was just far more sensible to actually flip that and create more of a separation, more of a buffer for the building away from the corner. With respect to some of the neighbors along Harrison, this was a particular concern. And so, we had presented an alternative option previously where the third story was removed only partially. And even that wasn't sufficient. And so, we, once again, went back to the drawing board and now fully removed the third story and created substantially greater setback to Harrison and to the corner as previously described. The landscaping here is consistent of both new plantings that we intend to provide, as well as some of the existing trees that are here along the Terhune Road. As you can see, because of the significant setback of the building from Terhune itself, that we believe the preservation of those trees would be possible, with primarily the tie to is that we're also creating various streetscape improvements, such as the extension of the sidewalk to wrap around Harrison into Terhune and to go all the way back through to the end of our site along Terhune. One of the additional reference points was regarding stormwater basins and other detention ponds or things along those lines, which we think are actual substantial improvements for the broader neighborhood as it improves upon the overall stormwater situation that is located on site. I'm going to move over, switch to the next slide, which I will label A fifteen. And so, pivoting over, this view now is of the building closer towards what someone along Terhune, going along Terhune would see of the building. Part of this is to show and highlight some of the residential stylings that we've incorporated into it, patios, gables, various changes of elements that really help break down the size and the scale of the building to seem much more residential. Additionally, as you can see here, there, you know, this is actually part of what the additional landscaping and the walking paths and enjoyable outdoor space that we're creating that is buffering both between the public right-of-way and the building itself. Finally, to note, there apparently are two minor variances that are related to this particular small monument sign we have on the corner. While we think that's very nice and certainly would be beneficial to us, we're not absolutely wedded to it. And so, if those variances are considered to be obnoxious, we would be willing to consider removal of the sign. Finally, what you also can notice is that we've ghosted out the trees that are along Terhune in order to provide you a view of what the building actually looks like, so I could describe it to you as before. However, in reality, flipping to the next slide, I'm going to exhibit A sixteen. The existence of those trees will provide substantial screening. And for the majority of people and along, coming up along Harrison and along Terhune, the building itself is well-screened. It's really hard to actually even see it. And this is, you know, an image that we showed in order to help, in order to help to highlight that point. Because otherwise, you wouldn't even be able to see the building for me to explain, you know, what are some of these architectural features we've added as a result.
Mr. Paul Castro, you want that to be A sixteen?
A sixteen, thank you.
And as Mark had referenced earlier, this is fairly consistent with a number of our projects that have recently been developed and approved in other areas of New Jersey. So, for example, we have a couple of other communities that are either under construction or just recently been approved in places like Summit, Bridgewater, Shrewsbury, and Franklin Lakes. Wonderful jurisdictions, much like here as well, with sizing and unit counts relatively similar to this one. So, in Shrewsbury, the building was eighty-one units. Bridgewater was eighty-four units. Sorry, Summit was eighty-one. Shrewsbury was eighty units. Franklin Lakes was eighty-eight units. The exact size of the lots also varied based on kind of situation and location.
Same product?
But essentially the same product. We're providing only assisted living and dementia care in all of those buildings. Summit, for example, is as small as one and a half acres, whereas Bridgewater's and Franklin Lakes are very similar to this size, somewhere between four and a half to almost five acres. But as a whole, our projects are all relatively, in these new generations, about this rough size and scale. And the parcels of land are generally dependent on the particular circumstance and the surrounding areas, but are fairly consistent with what's found here. Our planner, Mr. Phillips, will testify further regarding, we did some research to show that the number of new openings, not just Sunrise, but throughout the state of New Jersey from all other competitors, between 2015 and 2018, certainly seemed to indicate that this project is not on the larger side, rather, on the smaller side. is not on the larger side, rather, on the smaller side. And then apologies.
We have zoning issues to address. This is not really being talked about at this point.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I don't even know what that question means. Your planner raised this precise issue in their report that we were just received. So are we supposed to ignore it?
Continue.
But let's, I, at the last hearing, we were reprimanded for going too long. So I want to set the record straight. We received in comments that basically said, hey, this is the biggest sunrise ever. And you want us to ignore it or address it? We're going to address it on the record.
Well, you've heard, you know the issues that were raised and I want them addressed.
But you just complained about our addressing them.
Okay, if that's addressing them, that's fine.
How else should we address them but say that that was incorrect in the planner's report? It's unclear to me. So please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So, excuse me. So moving on from the site design itself, what we wanted to also bring up is to be able to address this question of need. And so one of the, I'm just going to ask someone to help distribute if possible.
So we'll mark this as A seventeen.
Yep.
And please describe what it is.
A seventeen.
Yes. So I provided handouts for members of the board and we are currently showing it on the screen above so that members of the public can view it as well. So A seventeen is an example of some of the analysis that we conduct in order to determine whether or not a site in an area is worthwhile, is worthwhile for our pursuit. And so within our business, most of the areas that we focus on are generally within what we would call three to five mile rings. Rings themselves are not, are imperfect because of geography, but they're useful proxies for just generally determining where people orient themselves in terms of day-to-day life, both commutes and activities as well as based on where they live. And so what you have before you is a map showing with the green dot in the center, the location of the site itself, a three-mile radius ring in red around it, and then a concentric circle for a five-mile radius ring around that as well. The red dots represent current existing competitors in the region with the red triangles representing new potential developments that are approved or scheduled or underway. And so part of what this is to show is that based on our analysis through, and the competitive data is obtained through NICMAP, which I had referenced previously as one of the primary third, legitimate third-party sources that keeps the most up-to-date information regarding competition, is that within the three-mile ring and within Princeton proper, and I just mean that to be everything kind of to the west of Route One and the river, that Acorn Glen is what we've considered as the primary single competitor. It is a almost twenty-year-old building that's about a hundred twenty units and your planner has referenced it previously. Once you begin to go outside of that, there are a couple of other potential competitors that are-
So how many are in Princeton? How many competitors for this product do you have in Princeton?
Yes, so within our assessment as we reviewed it internally, we primarily consider only Acorn Glen as the primary competitor within Princeton.
Okay, go ahead, proceed.
As you go outside and get to the edges of the three, to the three to five-mile ring, begin to pull in a couple of others that can be considered. Some are not, we don't deem to be competitive due to the nature of their products. So projects that are independent living-oriented, we would say those are not competitive products to us. So example for that on your bottom-left chart would be the new Sagewood Senior Living, Plainsborough's, two-hundred-and-sixty units of independent living. We would look at that and say that's not competitive.
Because it's independent living, it's not assisted living, therefore different needs-
Correct.
And you're marketing to different folks.
Different price points, different products, fundamentally different things. Similarly, even something such as the Stonebridge at Montgomery, we would look at to say is it's primarily not competitive because as a campus, continuing care retirement center, it contains over two-hundred units of independent living and only about sixty units of assisted living and dementia care with traditionally these sort of products, the in-place assisted living dementia care are primarily used to care for the aging population of their internal two-hundred-and-eleven units, yes.
Can you tell me about the Maplewood project that's shown in the three-mile ring?
Yes.
And whether that is considered a direct competitor and how it differs?
Yes, absolutely. So the Maplewood Senior Living project is within the three-mile ring. It is on the east side of Route One and is located on the campus of the Princeton Hospital. It is, we would consider that to be competitive, absolutely. It is a project that was approved a number of years ago and has been regularly delayed. Today, based on best, our best knowledge, it's projected to open in 2020.
How many units does that facility?
It is a hundred and five units.
A hundred and five units.
Yeah, so it's on your chart on the bottom left.
What about the Buckingham project on Raymond Road?
Excuse me?
Buckingham on Raymond Road?
I'm not aware of that one.
Could we-
Oh, oh, sorry. So yes, that would be then-
That's Brandywine?
Yeah. So again, then, you know, like I said, was you get from the three to five mile, there is Brandywine Senior Living at Princeton. Perhaps you're referring to that one?
Okay.
Yeah. And so it is while technically within the oh-eight-five-four-oh zip code, yeah, we see that as being both a little bit outlying as well as aged. It is built in 2001 and is almost twenty years old as well, or getting towards that.
Not a real competitor.
Yes.
Just, if you could, just to clarify, when you say units, could you clarify whether that's rooms or beds?
Yeah, so those would be rooms.
So you're saying that the Acorn Glen has a hundred and twenty rooms?
Based on the third-party information we've obtained, that's our knowledge.
Okay.
And so generally, looking at that map, we would say that this is not an overly saturated market. While there are competitors, certainly while there's a new one, Maplewood that is coming that we would be concerned about, we don't believe this to be oversaturated. Because the other side of it is the demand analysis. With this current count of both seniors as well as, yes, as well as their caregivers.
So this is A eighteen?
Yes, it can be. It's in the same packet.
Let's make it A eighteen. Describe what this is. It's entitled Supply and Demand Explanation.
Sure.
Just a quick question on radius. Why don't you use a ten-mile radius, which is what I'm used to seeing in studies?
Yeah, that's a great question. So just moving back. So a ten-mile radius begins to cover a fairly significant stretch of area, you know, it is, it's a radius, so for pi R squared, it's a hundred, no, three-hundred square miles or so. And so the outer edges of your ten-mile radius begins to reach into areas such as Monroe, such as Franklin Township, and out into areas where we would consider to be their own sub-markets and not necessarily directly competitive with Princeton itself. Part of our experience, and you know, we operate two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-sixty communities in the United States, is that within suburban areas such as this, the vast majority of our residents and their resident families come from within the three and five-mile ring. And sometimes they come from primarily even within the one-mile ring.
Could you just repeat that?
The vast majority of the demand at our existing Sunrises come from within the three and five-mile rings. That's just our operating experience. And based on the location and context, sometimes the vast majority of the demand would come from within even a one-mile ring based on how centrally located it is within perhaps a fairly dense area. And so to your question, I think it's a very fair one, you know, we tend to not look that far as a ten-mile ring within areas such as northern Jersey or-
And how are your occupancy rates?
Our occupancy is very strong throughout New Jersey. We are in the mid-ninety percent range. Yeah. And so the ten-mile ring would be much more relevant in other parts of perhaps the central part of the United States or more sparsely populated areas where that sort of travel distance becomes more pleasant.
Do you know the-
If that's your opinion in that sunrise, then I understand. But as I say, I've seen a lot, a fair amount of studies and they use ten miles more than-
For this product?
Excuse me?
For this product?
For assisted living, yes.
For sunrise?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not just sunrise, but just in general around New Jersey, including, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so it kind of doesn't list a lot of the competition that you don't see as competition, I guess.
I was wondering if you know the occupancy rates of the competitors that you listed?
Yeah. So we do some degree of mystery shopping. It's hard to know for sure whether or not somebody's lying to us as we don't have access to their underlying financials. It's our understanding that the Acorn Glen is full based on all of our attempts to research. The Maplewood has not been constructed yet.
So which one is full?
The Acorn Glen, the existing one, is full, based on our understanding.
What would you consider for this market, a satur-, a point where you hit saturation, like on a percentage of qualified households?
Yeah, so great question. So this is where we're going to get to. So this A eighteen begins into our supply, our demand analysis. And there are two primary factors that we begin to look at. One is caregivers and the other is seniors. And so we qualify them for income in order just to ensure that we're dealing with the relevant subset. And the reasoning behind these two particular metrics are twofold. One is that the seniors are many of the people who will be moving in with us and living there. However, the caregivers frequently are those who will make the major life decisions. Our founder, Paul Clausen, likes to say, you can count on one hand the number of people who have self-admitted. And so for us, caregivers is a very, very relevant metric. And so as you can see here, it's got some numbers between the three-mile, the five-mile, and we even did the zip code analysis due to the planner's analysis. And so what we do is that we begin to compare these number of households with the supply of existing units in place. And then that ratio is what we call the penetration ratio. And so as you can see, for the three-mile, the qualified senior penetration ratio is twenty-six-point-four percent, the qualified caregiver penetration ratio is five-point-four percent. And same thing, as you scale further out, five miles, it begins to be about thirty-five and, you know, the caregiver is about five percent. Those percentages actually begin to drop. And so lower percentages are more favorable in terms of your question for saturation, higher percentages are more unfavorable because that would be, there were more units per number of people, right? And so we're looking for lower percentages and, you know, the zip code analysis shows a lower percentage, eighteen-point-three percent and two-point-seven percent respectively. So what does that mean? Well, so in a vacuum, those numbers don't really mean anything. However, based on kind of our broad operating experience, we are able to then compare to most of our existing successful communities and others. And generally speaking, we have not necessarily hard and fast thresholds, however, on average, our target for the three-mile radius would be somewhere around six-and-a-half percent for qualified caregivers and thirty percent, thirty-one, thirty-two percent for the qualified seniors. It varies based on specific other factors such as, and, you know, here in Princeton, you know, one of the primary ones is we look at geographic factors as well. And so these are a little bit more subjected than, sorry, more, yes, subjective, but that the, the physical barriers here in Princeton are both the river and Route One and then some of the state roads further to the north and to the west and such. And so for us, what we were really targeting was that in-place population who lived in Princeton itself, who, based on the number of neighbor meetings we've had, have expressed their frustration with us holding it at the courtyards over on Route One because it's really inconvenient to get to. And so to that point, we made a very concerted effort to focus our search on land parcels, available land parcels within Princeton proper itself. And the other factors we look for are things such as what the planner had indicated in your comp plan, had identified, which is access to transportation, access to major corridors, proximity to commercial and retail, and proximity to medical office. For all the very normal reasons that these are fundamental needs for both our, excuse me, for our employees to use as well as both, as well as our residents to use and then their families to use. And so we look for these particular factors because the availability of public transportation enables ease of access for our staff, many of whom who are providing that direct care would be utilizing that public transportation to affordably get to work. Proximity to retail, again, becomes fundamental and fundamentally beneficial because it allows both for families who are visiting the residence to be able to take them on outings, as well as for our employees to on their, you know, when they're prior to shift or after shift to be able to buy food for themselves, perhaps buy food for their families, for shopping, and other priorities they may have. And again, similarly for access to medical office and the like. And so, you know, so fundamentally based on our analysis, as we look at then, the ratio of the existing number of qualified caregivers and seniors and the existing number of competitive units, we felt like this was a really fantastic opportunity itself.
I have a question.
Yes.
I can imagine how you count the number of caregivers, but how do you count the number of living parents of those caregivers? Is there any analysis of that?
No, so we don't do it that way because part of what, we use the count of caregivers as a proxy. Part of the reason for that is, one, many of those seniors who eventually move into a sunrise, sometimes they don't actually live in that jurisdiction at the moment.
No, but the question is, are they living or not? Do you have any, do you have any, I'm just curious how that is thought of because they're the actual people who you would be housing.
Yes, that's right. So it's a great question. The answer is we don't have the ability to drill into that degree of detail. What we're using is the 2010 census data that has been collected, and then there are particular demographic firms that you project from there to give us mid-year or mid-decade information.
So you don't have any sense of if you have a hundred or I'd say a thousand caregivers that you generally could expect fifty percent of the, you know, that they would have, you know, living parents that might be, I mean, how do you, it just seems like it's sort of, it's interesting to know how many caregivers-
Yes, so-
Potential caregivers, but, but the, there's a big question mark around how many people might actually live in your building-
Yeah, yeah, so-
Coming from that.
Yeah, so I think-
So it's just interesting, but it's not too useful to me.
Yes.
And I'm not sure how you find it useful.
Yes, so the way we look at it is that these are gross, these are gross figures. And so the ratios of these gross figures provide us a good deal of comfort because of our significant experience and success within other locations. So we have, like I said before, two-hundred-and-sixty, you know, Sunrises across the U.S., and so we have a very detailed amount of information regarding where the, these sort of ratios on a gross basis have led to success.
Part of the demand question involves cost. Are you competitively priced in as far as you know?
Yes.
You're saying that's a zoning issue as well?
Well, they're talking about demand. I mean, the real question, and as far as I'm concerned, is you're a for-profit company. You wouldn't be building this if you didn't think there was demand there. So I think, you know, all the numbers and all this other stuff, for somebody like me that doesn't understand all that, is meaningless. You're going to build it because you think you can make money and fill it.
That's correct.
Otherwise, you wouldn't be doing it, so.
I think we're going astray. I would, we've got a lot of real issues to talk about.
Well, I'm just saying, as far as I'm concerned, this conversation is over because-
Sorry?
They wouldn't be building it unless they thought there was a demand. So whether it's three miles or ten miles, doesn't make any difference, does it? So whether it's three miles or 10 miles, doesn't make any difference, does it?
We wouldn't build it, we would not build it if we thought, if we thought it was gonna be empty.
Exactly.
And Sunrise's track record is, is impeccable on occupancy, so we're giving you the backup for that because your, your professionals asked for it, so we're responding.
Right.
But of course, to your point, we would not be here, Sunrise would not be here. It's a major financial investment. We would not be here if we thought for any reason it would, it would not be occupied.
So just as another final point, was mentioned before, that the certificate of need, we had already applied for a certificate of need for this particular facility. It is, the review process underway with Department of Health. We recently have received new approvals for certificate of needs for four properties. We are currently licensed and have certificates of needs for our 25 existing-
How many times have you been denied for that application in your experience?
We've never been denied on an application for a certificate of need.
Thank you.
Do you happen to know how many certificate of needs are pending in front of the Department of Health for this area, whether three mile, five mile, 10 mile?
Yeah, so they would be, they would be connected with approved projects. And so if, in this case, it would be likely the Maplewood.
What's, what's that?
Likely the Maplewood and none other that we know of.
So there's none certificate of needs pending that you know of?
If you know.
No, not that I know of.
Okay, that was the question.
Yeah, not that I know of.
So-
Okay.
There were questions raised by the planner in connection with the total number of employees that would serve the site and number of employees expected to be present during each shift. Is that something you're ready to, to?
Sure, absolutely.
Just get that out of the way in terms of the housekeeping was raised by your professionals, so-
Absolutely.
And then we have two, two more questions and then next witness, Mr. Chairman.
Great. So on average, for a building of approximately this size, we would expect peak shift to be approximately 35, give or take employees or so. Some of our employees work shifts, so peak shift would be approximately from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. A second shift is from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And then overnight shift is from 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Those are approximate. We can adjust as necessary to accommodate local needs, but that, that generally covers that.
Thank you. That's all we have for this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have other witnesses you wish to-
We do.
Good.
Mr. Lang. Please state your name for the record.
Jeremy Lang with Mazer Consulting.
Mr. Lang, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
You have a presentation you'd like to make, following up on the last hearing and numerous issues that have been raised by the board's professionals, is that true?
That's correct.
Please proceed.
Do you need to mark this? So I've just marked Exhibit A-19. It's a color-rendered site plan prepared by Mazer Consulting. It's dated October 16th, 2018. It's consistent with the site plan that was submitted as part of the bifurcated application, but has been color-rendered and also it is on an aerial photo background so that you can see the surrounding area. North is generally down. You'll see Turhune Road is running left to right and then running north to south on the right side of the street, excuse me, right side of the exhibit is Harrison Street So as Jerry went through, this has been an iterative process. Mazer's been involved with no less than eight concept plans to get to this point, so it's been continual refinement. A few major things, as Jerry pointed out, the height has been reduced, so it's now fully conforming. It's a two-story building, 35 feet or just under 35 feet maximum height. In addition to that, the building has been pushed back from Harrison Street North and also back from Turhune. So we're now up against the shopping center parking lot. That's resulted in a reduction of eight variances, excuse me, six variances have been eliminated, so that's height, front yard setback, rear yard setback, and two height-to-setback ratio variances. We have two variances remaining with the sign, which is located at the intersection of Harrison Street North and Turhune Road. While Jerry said that that would be something they would be willing to eliminate, I do think the sign is advisable. You do have a relatively short frontage on Harrison Street North, and there's not excellent visibility because you have these nice street trees in front of the Princeton Shopping Center. So as you're coming northbound, you don't really see the site until the last possible minute, and you've got these lane assignments also going on at the traffic signal. So from a wayfinding perspective, there's definitely an advantage to having to the sign there. Likewise, as you're approaching from the north heading southbound, you have a dedicated left turn lane that you would need to be in in order to get to the site. So in order to make that movement safely, you have to see the sign sufficient distance down the road. So I think it is advisable to have the sign in that the additional size, which while is a variance, is still a relatively small sign at 16 square feet, I think it's an appropriate balancing of wayfinding and traffic safety versus obviously aesthetic and other interests. In terms of the site layout, a lot of thought has gone into this. For instance, pedestrian circulation has been a critical element, as you're all very well aware. Princeton is really a leader in pedestrian circulation. We're certainly trying to carry that forward here on the site. Harrison Street North already has a sidewalk, recently constructed. Our plan would continue that sidewalk now down Turhune Road. That would then connect to a new access to Grover Park that would run along the easterly boundary of the site. So from a kind of more macro sense, you have excellent pedestrian circulation being completed. Then within the site itself, there's independent circulation, so you can completely go around the site, the walking site, without having to enter the public right away. You, of course, can enter the public right away, and certainly with the Princeton Shopping Center being just to our south, we would envision that happening, both for employees and residents. Further, the memory care area, which is located on the easterly side of the building, has like another inner circle, if you will, of pedestrian area for those residents that is fenced in so that those residents don't inadvertently wander where they shouldn't go. Also, that helps in our loading zone, which is located in the southeastern portion of the site, because the fence then separates the memory care from that kind of second-level pedestrian corridor, which doubles as our loading walkway to access the, the loading doors. There are a couple located on the southerly facade, approximately in the middle of the building. So the types of trucks that would be here, these would be box trucks or single-unit trucks. The applicant will stipulate that they will not use tractor-trailers for delivery. Those trucks would park in the loading zone. Hand trucks would be utilized to take the supplies into the facility. And this is an accessible path to do just that, and again, fence separated. Immediately across from that, the loading zone, is the refuse and recycling area. That way, the loading zone can double as an area for the refuse and recycling trucks to be able to get into a 90-degree position to pick up the respective containers, both in terms of deliveries and refuse and recycling. Each one would occur two to three times a week for a total of four to six truck trips, if you will, accessing the site during the course of any given week. In terms of the parking lot, you'll see what you would normally have is you would have parking that would just be immediately in front of and adjacent to the building. You generally would have massing like that. However, here, we're very sensitive to the overall context of the area. So what we've done is led with landscaping and fit the parking afterwards, as opposed to the normal where you put, lead with parking and fit the landscaping afterwards. So we've taken what I'll call the primary real estate right at the intersection of Harrison Street North and Turhune Road, essentially made that, while it's not a public park per se, we've made it very akin to one where there's a lot of landscaping, open space, sidewalks, a pergola type of facility. So there, there's a lot of nice area for the residents to utilize. And, and I will remind everybody, everybody likes to think of assisted living as an institutional use, but it's really not. It's a home. There are, these residents are generally, obviously in the memory care, there are some issues, but many of the assisted living rooms are fully cognizant, they're just having some physical issues, they just need that extra help. It's not that they need full-on medical care, they just need some extra help with daily activity, but other than that, they're, this is their home, this is where they live. So that, we literally have a front porch on the building, there's literally rear areas that act as a backyard so that there's plenty of outdoor opportunities. And then again, we have that pedestrian connectivity, so not only can they enjoy the campus itself, but they can enjoy the surrounding area in Princeton. So with that driver, with the pedestrian, the landscaping driving, that then pushes the sidewalk, excuse me, the sidewalk, the parking to the rear. Again, we were sensitive though to the perception from Turhune Road, so we don't have double-loaded parking here, this is single-loaded parking along the Turhune frontage. We don't go to double-loading until you make this turn to the south, heading back toward Grover Park. So that takes a significant amount of our parking and essentially hides it, it tucks it in back in this section, the easterly section of the site, where it's not nearly as readily visible from the road. In terms of site access, we have two driveways on Turhune Road. One is located immediately across in the medical office driveway. This is an appropriate design, helps avoid additional conflicts. And then we have a second driveway that provides some more direct access to that parking I just described that's on the easterly side of the site, where certainly we would expect most of our employees to park. There is a pergola at the main entrance that can be used for a drop-off, and there's, there's no parking intended there. This would be a short-term drop-off type of situation. The application is bifurcated, so we don't have full site plan and design, but we have roughed in a storms, storms, excuse me, storm management system, and that is shown on the plan. So we've at least demonstrated that the site has the capacity to meet all the stormwater management requirements. Of course, at the time of site plan, we would take a closer look at that, look to incorporate some more green infrastructure, things like that, as we've had on some of the prior designs. But for the purposes of the bifurcated application, we've simply demonstrated compliance with the state stormwater rules and would stipulate to that.
Could you possibly, using the, the perspective image where the trees have been ghosted and comparing that with the articulation of the building? Not that one. Yeah, so look at the building. Could you possibly show us where, how much of that building you think is shown in that drawing?
Sure, so in this, A-15, right?
A-15, correct.
Okay, so looking at Exhibit A-15, this is taken from the perspective of the intersection of Harrison and Turhune, and we are looking to the southeast. So we have the building corner, and then what you see just to the left of center of the exhibit, right behind this sedan, there's a porch-like feature. Now I'm gonna refer back to A-19. You'll see that porch feature is located, well, it's hard to describe on the record, but that's, I'm indicating where it is in A-19, so we've got to that point. And then there's another building block that's got some roof elements, and we can see those roof elements here in Exhibit A-19. And then you're ending somewhere right about here. So I would say the, the perspective is ending just shy of the main entrance, just before you get to the pergola, the turnaround at the main entrance. So we're just west of that.
About 30 percent of the building?
Yes, about roughly 30 percent of the building.
Thank you. And can you, you, you mentioned that you've addressed or you've shown potential underground stormwater facilities in the plan that was submitted. Can you show the outline of where they are located on the plan you submitted?
Memory serves, we've got, I think, let me, rather than, I'm pretty sure I remember where they are, but I want to just open the plan and make sure I get it right.
Sure.
So just off the westerly end of the building, we have an infiltration system that would be collecting roof runoff, and then there are two underground systems. They're both on the north side of the building. One is more on the westerly half and the other is more on the easterly half of the building. So those meet our basic stormwater management and groundwater recharge requirements. But as you've seen in our prior design, we can certainly implicate, or excuse me, include green infrastructure design. That is the preference of Sunrise, so features like that would certainly be added as appropriate in time of site plan.
But could you put trees on top of those, those areas?
On top of underground storm detention systems? Typically not.
Okay, and what about in front of, along Taroon, near that corner where you said it was like a parklight setting? If you look at the plan you submitted, is there not in fact also a swell, a drainage swell there that you're proposing or showing?
I'm not-
If you have to look at the site plan, the paper plan.
I'm, I'm not following where you're asking.
If you, along Taroon, near the corner where you said it was a parklight setting-
Yes.
And we are also, the sketches showed substantial landscape. Are you not showing that you have a, a swell along that area, an area where the rainwater will collect along those areas?
There is a, you know, low point or a depression located in this general area I'm indicating. It's not a swell, I'm looking at the plans now, there is no swell there. There is a yard inlet that will drain this overall lawn area.
Might that be a recharge swell?
That could definitely be a recharge swell in, in the final design.
And that would also kind of inhibit the eligibility to put landscaping, correct?
No, not, not at all. Not at all.
So you think you can plant trees in a recharge swell?
Bio-retention is a very well-understood green infrastructure practice. They are regularly designed throughout the state. In fact, I actually, under a DEP grant, wrote a model ordinance for the Matina Comp Watershed incorporating green infrastructure, and that has become the model for a stormwater rule proposal that's supposed to be put out.
So I, I would contest that you can't plant an evergreen tree in a recharge swell. Like, that's not possible. There are no evergreen trees that will survive in those situations. Then also, can you also, on the, on the rendering, could you show me, and I realize he's the engineer, so that's, I don't want to, the, can you also show me on the rendering if the office building on the other side of Taroon shows up on that, at that image?
It does not.
It does not? So it's, it's off the image. It's set back further from Taroon than the proposed facility.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify for the record, there are any number of plantings that are suitable in a bio-retention swell, so it's not that the area cannot be planted.
That's not what I asked. I said, what's your image? If you could put the image 2A back up.
We know that you didn't ask that, but we just want to supplement the-
I know, and I want to make sure that, that my point is-
You didn't say that you asked that, but we want to make sure we know that their plantings are not-
I'm not gonna disagree that you could plant in the area, but 2B is what I meant. I apologize, I said 2A. In 2B, are you not showing substantial evergreen trees as the buffer there?
The, the larger trees in the front here look like deciduous trees.
I mean the ones under them. No, they're the pine trees along Taroon is what's the large trees. That's the existing evergreen tree, pine trees along Taroon. The underneath, that's blocking out the building at ground level.
That's, okay, that's these trees behind the, the existing trees here, that's here.
Right, and that's what, I'm suggesting that that type of vegetation you're showing, as I said in my report, doesn't match with the swell. Now granted, you didn't submit a site plan, but I'm just indicating that this documents you submitted don't support precisely some of the stuff you're showing on those images.
That's a mischaracterization. This, this is not a swell. This is a, a yard area being drained with an inlet. There is no water coming from some other location. This is literally the rain that's hidden, the lawn has to go somewhere, which is a single inlet. Now, we could absolutely make that a bio-retention facility, start forcing water in that location, and of course, the plant material would have to be appropriate for it. But as shown on the plan, that's not what's occurring. So the plan is accurate.
Okay.
Can I ask you, there's a, two rights of way existing across the property, which presumably you're trying to get rid of. Where are they located on your?
They don't show up- They don't show up on exhibit A-19, but they do show up on the plans. There are two fifty-foot wide right-of-ways, and there's also a twenty-foot wide, I think it's a PSENG utility right-of-way, if memory serves. And those are located, one runs...
Would they bifurcate the structure that you're proposing to put there?
So the one is located, runs east to west, is located on the southerly side of the property. So it's essentially the, kind of the, the rear half and the quote-unquote backyard area of the building, almost for the entire length of the site. That runs, the other one runs roughly north to south along the easterly property line. And that's, that's impacted both by some of the parking and also that Grover Park access that we're proposing to build. But certainly, yes, a, an action by the governing body would be necessary for this project to proceed.
Are, are you going to talk about, is there a fence on the, between the shopping center? What, what is that white line there? Is that a solid fence?
This left white line?
Yes.
That's just the property boundary on the exhibit. So right now, we do have a fence around the memory care. I think there is a, is a retaining wall back there? We have a retaining wall located along that rear portion, but I don't believe at this time we have a fence. That's certainly something that could be incorporated at site plan, if, if that was the board's thought on it.
So access to the shopping center on foot would be, come out the front door, go on Terhune, turn the corner and walk down the sidewalk to...
As proposed here, yes. While it would be great, and in fact, there is already kind of a slope to access roughly in the center of this, of the building, of the proposed building, like, an access could be built, but of course, we would need cooperation from the property owner next door. I imagine that would be something Sunrise would be willing to pursue.
You have some backyards of houses on the east side of that lot, and you, I think, said you have a fence running down that?
There's another retaining wall located in this area, because the grade is higher on our site. In this area, there's a, this is the, the vegetation gets basically more mature as you move east, so the, the trees that would remain here along this easterly side would be the...
But there are houses, individual houses, that back onto your property, I understand.
Yes, the, the closest home that's on the east side is actually on exhibit A-19. You can see it in the photographs, immediately next to us. This particular home, it's the side of the home that abuts us, but to your point...
And you have a fence separating your property from their property, is that what you said?
I didn't say that, but certainly something we would be willing to do. The plan isn't quite as detailed, being a bifurcated application, so we didn't really thoroughly assess where we could all the fencing, but certainly fencing could be placed in this area.
Are you lowering the grade slightly from the existing grade? It looks, it looks quite flat in the rendering, but I think it's rather steep, yeah, right now. It, it looks like it's been lowered from the site plan a, a little bit.
So the grade across the site, I'm just trying to think how to explain it. So the elevations, maybe the first half of the westerly leg are around 173, 174, and that's basically where our finished floor is. So this westerly half of the building is pretty much flat with the existing grade. Then the site actually comes up, there's a, a number of piles and, and some other things located maybe in the centroid of the site, so just east of the center of the building. And then the grade falls off pretty good now, as you go down toward the east, where we have our parking lot and eventually the Groves, Grover Park access.
So in order, in order to achieve that plan, you're going to... It's all right, go ahead, you can talk.
Everybody should try to make sure they use the microphones, it's, so the tape can pick up the testimony.
In order to achieve what you've shown in that plan, you're going to have to clear just about all of the site. I mean, you're, you're showing the, the landscaping along Taroon, close to the intersection of, of Harrison, but the rest of the site is pretty, between the retaining walls, the grading changes, the building, the parking, you're pretty much going to clear all the vegetation out of that site.
That's correct. All the vegetation within the limit of disturbance. So it's essentially this leg of the property, if you will, and then around that curve we were talking about. I would think the Grover Park trail can be kind of meandered through the existing vegetation, but certainly the parking lot would involve clearing. We do show a retaining wall along that easterly edge, so that would be potentially our limit of clearing there. And then it would be cleared back through here as you're going west.
It may, it may be a little difficult to maintain some of the planting along Taroon with that level of...
I looked at that because it was in the planner's comment letter. The grading on the plan could have been fine-tuned a little better to keep the grading out of that area. Another possibility would be for this proposed sidewalk, if we put curb in along that section, and there is curb right at the corner already, that would help, give us a way of elevating the sidewalks, so instead of having to dig the sidewalk into the ground, we can put it on the surface and build the soil up a little bit. That might be a way of making sure that the sidewalk itself doesn't impact that root structure.
But given the size of the building, you've really had to, to clear it all to make it work?
Yes.
I mean, you can, you can massage it and make some adjustments, but overall, that site is going to be pretty much clear-cut. I mean, maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit, but it's going to be, it's going to be pretty much cleared.
Absolutely, and that's why we're proposing this robust landscaping package, that once that's all done and put back in, we would replant all around the building. And of course, the site plan would have a lot more detail, but, but to your point, yes, we would be starting over, so to speak, around the building.
Okay, thank you.
You have other people to talk?
Please. Please state your name for the record.
David Shropshire.
Mr. Shropshire, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
You've reviewed the revised plans, correct?
Yes.
You have some comments in response to the board professionals' questions and comments that we've received, correct?
Yes, I'm going to refer to Mr. Stankis's review letter.
Could you use the microphone? I'm having a job hearing.
First twelve comments of the October ninth, two thousand eighteen.
I think he's off.
It should have a green light on it.
The first twelve comments relate to the traffic study. The, the second set of comments to the, and third set of comments relate to site plan issues, which many of those things have been discussed, but are more appropriate for the site plan. With regard to the traffic study, the, I can confirm that there's 110 beds that we're talking about here, which was the basis for our trip generation. There was 124 beds, I believe, put on an architectural plan, but the reality is, the proposal is for eighty-four units with 110 beds. So that does not change any of the results that were in our report or that I testified to at the last hearing, and that addresses many of the comments that are contained within the twelve comments under the traffic study. Comment number one dealt with employees and timeframes. Mr. Liang has discussed that. We are in agreement or acknowledge comments two, three, six, and eleven, and I'll, I'll comment on the others. Comment number four was related to, did we do our counts on a typical day? We believe we did. School was in session, the peak time were related to school hours, of the street peak hours that we counted. So we believe that public schools, private schools were the main components with regard to the, the peaking of traffic in the area. Princeton University was not in session at the time of those counts, but I don't believe there's going to be a substantial change in those volumes. Ten percent change would be considered substantial with regard to Princeton University not being in session at this particular location. With regard to comment number eight, there's a question about whether or not the trip generation that we used from the Institute of Transportation Engineers is consistent with what Sunrise has experienced, since Sunrise has so many facilities. I can testify that counts that were done at Sunrise were actually incorporated into the ITE data, in my experience in doing probably fifty Sunrise sites, is that the Sunrise data is consistent with the ITE data. So therefore, I believe that the, the trip generation that we used in our study is accurate and consistent, not only with national standards, but what we can expect for this site in Princeton. With regard to comment number ten, there was some idea that possibly we were a little bit underestimating the trips that might be heading to the east along Taroon. We did a twenty-five percent distribution of our traffic in that direction versus seventy-five percent back towards Harrison or to and from Harrison. The, we based those estimates somewhat on the existing traffic that's out there today. However, we also looked at the Princeton Medical Group driveway, which gave us an indication of where traffic was distributing from that facility, which would be employee and patron based. And what we found at that driveway is, around ten percent of the traffic is actually heading to and from the east along Taroon, with ninety percent heading back towards Harrison. So we believe we had a pretty conservative estimate of what traffic of, would be generated from Sunrise, would be actually heading towards the east using that twenty-five percent figure. And I believe that was all the traffic-related questions. As it relates to the use variance that we're seeking, I believe the testimony they gave at the last hearing is still valid, and that is from a traffic perspective. We have no substantial detriment whatsoever to the public good, nor do we have any substantial impairment of your zoning plan with regard to how traffic is generated and will affect the, the roadway system for this particular use.
Thank you. That's all we have for this witness, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we'll call our next witness, Mr. Paul Phillips. Please state your name for the record.
Paul Phillips, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S.
Mr. Phillips, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
And your credentials and educational background, please, Mr. Phillips?
Sure. So I am a principal in the firm of Phillips Price. I've been practicing as a planner in New Jersey for over thirty-five years. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I do hold a master's degree in urban planning from Hunter College. My firm serves as a planning consultant to numerous planning and zoning boards and governing bodies in New Jersey. I've appeared and been accepted as an expert in over two hundred and fifty municipalities in the state, and also on dozens of occasions in this superior court in New Jersey.
Thank you. Questions relating to his qualifications as a planner, Mr. Chairman, members of the board?
Go ahead, Saffron.
Excuse me? Yes?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So I actually have quite a bit to cover, so we sort of...
We got you on earlier than we thought.
Ask for the board's indulgence, there's, there's a, there's a lot to cover from a planning standpoint. So again, the, the proposal before you on behalf of Sunrise is to develop a eighty-four unit, one hundred and ten-bed assisted living facility on a site that's roughly four and a half acres, located at the intersection of Harrison Street North and Taroon Road. It's in the RSM, Residential Senior Market Zone. That zone does not permit assisted living facilities, therefore, we're before you seeking a D1 use variance. We are bifurcating the use variance, so we're not seeking site plan approval at this time. The application also exceeds two of the requirements in the RSM zone, which also rise to the level of a D variance. There is a D var, D four variance being sought for exceeding the maximum Florya ratio, and there is technically a D five variance being sought for exceeding the maximum density in the district. And again, although, as I mentioned, we are not seeking site plan approval at this time, based on what Al will characterize as our use variance concept plan, we would require, I think roughly five C variances that were covered by our engineer to some extent, the sub, related to the sign, the size and setback of the sign, technically for the number of parking spaces, parking setback, several spaces do not meet the parking setback to a property line, parking between the building and Taroon Road, and also for impervious coverage. So others have described the site, just briefly again, it's currently vacant, roughly four and a half acres. It's an L-shaped property, as you can see from the exhibit. It has about a hundred and eighty feet of frontage on Harrison Street North. The bulk of its frontage is on Taroon, it's about seven hundred and forty feet of frontage, and as has been testified, there's sort of a tail portion that extends out towards Grover Park. The surrounding uses have also been described by other witnesses. There's really a mix of uses in the immediate area. The immediately adjacent uses would include the Princeton Shopping Center directly behind the site with its frontage on Harrison Street North. As I mentioned, Grover Park to the east, single-family residents directly abutting the property to the east as well. There is the Princeton Healthcare Office Building directly opposite Taroon Road. As you go further down Taroon Road away from Harrison Street North, there are additional offices as well. And then across Harris, Harrison Street North, the land use pattern is predominantly single-family residential. The project, again, eighty-four unit, one hundred and ten, eighty-four bed, one hundred and ten unit, eighty-four unit, one hundred and ten bed assisted living facility. Just over half the units are proposed to be assisted living, straight assisted living, with the remainder being designed for memory care or dementia units. Ten percent of the beds are proposed to be affordable, Medicaid affordable beds, consistent with state and COA requirements. The credits for these units can be applied by Princeton to meet some portion of its affordable housing obligation. As I indicated, a D1 variance is required. By the way, the RSM zone permits, right, the underlying zoning permits a maximum density of eleven units per acre, and it is limited to residents age sixty-two or older. And interestingly, the site is also designated as affordable housing area on the, on the zoning map. In terms of the planning proofs for a D1 variances, this board is obviously aware of them. An applicant has to satisfy positive and negative criteria. On the positive side, most importantly, as your planner outlined for you, this proposal involves an inherently beneficial use. Inherently beneficial uses are those uses that serve the zoning purpose of promoting the general welfare, and they presumptively satisfy the positive criteria for a grant of a D1 use variance. The MLUL defines an inherently beneficial use as a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the public welfare. I would note for the record that assisted living facilities have been deemed by New Jersey courts as being inherently beneficial. One of the cases, Sunrise versus Zoning Board of Adjustment of Madison from nineteen ninety-nine. There's a key appellate division case, Jaber versus West Orange, which recognized that specialized senior housing was necessary to meet the needs of the state's elderly population. The Jaber Court also noted that all senior citizens in need deserve the assistance, attention, and protection of the state. There are other cases out of the appellate division recognizing that assisted living facilities are inherently beneficial, and prime among them, the Meridian versus Township of Wall case, which dates back to two thousand and two. So in sum, or in short, this application clearly falls within the scope of an inherently beneficial use. I would note further, and this is important for the record... I would note further, and this is important for the record, that an inherently beneficial use is exempt from satisfying the so-called Medici criteria, which is criteria established in a nineteen-eighty-seven New Jersey Supreme Court case for D-variances which do not involve an inherently beneficial use. So this applicant, or any applicant for an inherently beneficial use, need not demonstrate that the site is particularly suited for the use. An applicant does not have to advance that proof before you for an inherently beneficial use, nor must the applicant meet the so-called enhanced quality of proof standard under the Medici case, whereby a board must otherwise reconcile the granting of relief with the fact that neither the zoning or the master plan contemplates assisted living facilities at this location or in the RSM zone. So the applicant's not required to perform that reconciliation test here, not bound by Medici. So, and I say this respectfully in response to some of the issues raised in your planner's report, the applicant is not required to address many of the zoning and master plan issues that were raised by your planner. What the applicant is required to do is address the four-part balancing test, which was established by the New Jersey Supreme Court in the SECA versus Wall case for an inherently beneficial use, as your planner correctly pointed out, in determining whether or not you should grant the D-variance. And as he mentioned, it's a four-part test. The first part is to identify the public interest at stake. The second part is to identify any detrimental impacts associated with the proposal. The third part of the test is to determine whether the imposition of reasonable conditions can be put in place to limit or reduce impacts if possible. And then lastly, you as a board must weigh the positives and the negatives, and then determine on balance whether or not the variance should be granted. So let me start with my interpretation of that test as applied to this particular application. So clearly, the courts have established that assisted living ranks high on the public interest scale. I would also note that senior community housing construction is listed as one of the thirteen purposes of zoning in the municipal land use statute. In fact, it's one of the very few specific uses that's mentioned in the purpose section of the statute. I would also cite that in your two thousand and seventeen master plan reexamination report, both providing affordable housing and maintaining a range of housing opportunities to ensure a diverse population at all ages and income levels are identified as major issues in that document. You heard from Sunrise, you heard from Jerry Lung regarding the number of qualified senior households and caregiver households within the three-to-five-mile radius of the site, and the dearth of existing facilities in Princeton, and not only in Princeton proper, but you heard from Jerry that even within the larger market area, there are not that many facilities that exist today which are designed exclusively for assisted living and memory care. They may be part of larger CCRCs where the aging in place is basically established, or they may be associated with independent living units. Again, as noted, there's only one facility, to our understanding, in Princeton proper, which is Acorn Glen on Mount Lucas Road, which is roughly a hundred-and-twenty units. I would only offer from a need perspective the following, and this is sort of more qualitative than quantitative, but clearly, the leading edge of the baby boomers are now in their seventies and will increasingly need specialized housing alternatives such as assisted living. Also, the demand for assisted living beds, this would be non-memory care, has increased as the number of persons that have been released from either directly from hospitals or short-term rehab facilities that really aren't good candidates for either home care or skilled nursing. Assisted living clearly fills that particular void. In addition, probably in the last ten to fifteen years, not only has there been a general aging of the population, but now there is clearly an increase in the percentage of elderly who are being diagnosed with dementia. We weren't having that ten, fifteen, twenty-five years ago. Just a couple of facts on this. The Alzheimer's Association, which is a nonprofit group, made an estimate in two thousand and sixteen of the number of persons in New Jersey over the age of sixty-five with Alzheimer's. It was a hundred-and-seventy thousand. They had projected that number will grow to over two-hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-ten thousand by two thousand and twenty-five. Also of interest is that these figures from the Alzheimer's Association were cited in the New Jersey Alzheimer's Study Commission, which was a commission established by the governor, and a report was prepared in two thousand and sixteen to the governor and the legislature. And one of the commissioner's recommendations was to increase the capacity of long-term care facilities to serve individuals with Alzheimer's disease. So getting back to, again, identifying the public interest at stake, given local demographics, the awareness now, the aging of the population, the awareness of Alzheimer's, the limited number of facilities, both for assisted living and memory care dementia in the Princeton area, I think it's evident that this application ranks very high on the public interest scale. Step two, identification of detrimental impacts. And as a sort of preamble to that, let me emphasize that this property is currently zoned for senior residential housing, with an affordable component that allows multifamily densities of up to eleven units per acre. This is not a conventional detached, single-family housing. It is also in an area where I characterize the immediate neighborhood as essentially mixed use in character. I would also point out that assisted living, in my professional opinion, based on my own experience and empirical evidence, is not incompatible with single-family housing in terms of juxtaposition of uses, and I say that provided there are appropriate safeguards in place. And then this is borne out empirically throughout the state, where you can see that these facilities have existed harmoniously next to single-family. I would also note that, based on my own experience representing both assisted living developers and communities, where assisted living applicants have appeared in my towns, that they often also locate in mixed-use areas such as this, where the land use pattern is either predominantly commercial or a mix of commercial and residential. The point being that the locational aspects of this site, in terms of the surrounding neighborhood and zoning context, are not out of the ordinary for assisted living use, and in fact, are quite desirable for such use. I think the potential for impacts, again, looking at step two of the SECA test, I think they're limited by the nature of assisted living use. Basically, you have a use where parking and internal circulation is relatively infrequent or light in nature due to the age and condition of the residents. The fact that the bulk of the activity occurs indoors, as you've heard, and this is my experience with the average age being eighty-five or eighty-six, residents do not drive at assisted living facilities. So vehicles coming and going will be confined to employees, visitors and deliveries several times per week. In terms of this site, I think, from an impact standpoint, I think what's important is the access, there's no access from Harrison Street North. The access is limited to Tarhune Road. From a traffic perspective, you heard from Mr. Shropshire, this is not a significant peak hour generator. It will have minimal impact on the adjacent roadway network. This proposal's providing adequate parking, consistent with state RSIS standards for assisted living use. The building itself is set back over a hundred-and-fifty feet from the nearest residential property to the east, which I think is important, and there's an intervening buffer, and I know we're not at site plan, but I think we certainly will have room for an intervening buffer based on the use variance concept. And lastly, I see no adverse impacts on either the shopping center, the offices across Tarhune, or Grover Park. And I think importantly, in terms of, again, the concept plan, the finger portion of the site or the bulk of it, and basically, there are residential properties whose rear lot lines will abut up against it. This applicant is not proposing to develop the large majority of that finger portion of the site to keep it basically in its natural state, which I think is important from a land use impact standpoint. And I think with regard to the shopping center property as well, you can see from this plan that the directly abutting, and the aerial, directly abutting lands of the shopping center are not developed. You'll see the tree line, they are vegetated, they're not developed, and I think what this has allowed the applicant to do is basically push the building as far back as possible. The applicant still meets the rear setback, but is now able to have a, I think, roughly ninety-foot setback from Tarhune, which I think is also positive in terms of the visual impacts and the ability to provide some landscaping in front of the building to basically soften the aesthetics of the building as well. There are two other D-variances, as I mentioned, FLRA ratio, the underlying zoning allows twenty-five percent. The applicant is at roughly forty-one-point-eight percent, and also for density, which is a D-five variance. As I mentioned, the RSM district has a maximum of eleven units per acre, which would translate to about forty-nine or fifty units on the site. The applicant is roughly, slightly over, I think, eighteen units per acre, based on the eighty-four units proposed. Each of these variances relates to the nature of the use, in my opinion. In other words, we're dealing with a different use than the zoning permits or contemplates, and to a large extent, I think these variances are subsumed within the D-one variance. And there's a case on point, which is probably now about seven or eight years old, New Jersey Supreme Court case known as Price versus Hameji, which acknowledges that in very often, the C or other D-variances are subsumed within the D-one variance. Notwithstanding that, we still have to put in proofs. There is a more relaxed or a lesser standard of proof than a D-one variance for D-four and D-five variances. Basically, there's a series of court cases, including Randolph Town Center, which have established those proof requirements. Essentially, what the courts have said is that the applicant needs to demonstrate that the site can overcome any problems that might result from the fact that the proposal, in this case, doesn't meet either the density or the FAR standard, again, the standard established for the RSM uses. So let me begin with the FAR relief, and I'll say that while the additional FAR may seem significant on its face, I think one has to recognize that the standard was never intended for assisted living-type use, which, again, by its very nature, almost uniformly and typically involves higher FARs. FARs as compared to a conventional multifamily product, which is what this zone calls for. Have to, I think, further recognize that FAR as a regulatory planning mechanism is intended principally to control the intensity of development, and usually non-residential development as opposed to residential development. So intensity meaning traffic, parking, generation, site, activity. And secondarily, it is intended to some extent to regulate building mass. Those are the reasons for an FAR requirement. With regard to the former, I think the witnesses, all of us have addressed that this is a relatively benign land use from an intensity standpoint. With regard to the latter, I think the prime issue with FAR is whether the building would overwhelm the site. And I think what we've done here is, and there's a trade-off involved, under the applicant's prior proposal, there was a three-story building that was proposed, taller, larger, it exceeded your height requirement. The applicant reduced that to a two-story building to be more compatible with the immediately adjacent context, but also was able, as I mentioned, to push the building further back from Tarhune to lessen any undue visual impacts, particularly from the public viewshed. And I would note that, at least the way I read the zoning, under the RSM zoning, you could have a building setback from Tarhune of just twenty feet. You have to be fifty feet on North Harrison, a fifty feet to the residential side property line, but from Tarhune, which abuts another non-residential zone, it could be as close as twenty feet. So that, in part, is the trade-off in terms of the FAR and the applicant's ability to try and minimize that impact. With regard to the D-five density variance, again, when you compare a conventional multifamily project to assisted living invariably, because of the product, the assisted living has higher densities. It's a different animal, if you will, yet the eighteen-plus units per acre that we are seeking here is actually on the low side, in my experience, not only for Sunrise facilities, and I've been involved in several other Sunrise facilities, but other assisted living providers in the state of New Jersey, and mostly ones that have been recently built or approved. Jerry had mentioned the Franklin Lakes project that we recently got an approval. That was at nineteen units per acre in sort of a similar area with some commercial and abutted, single-family residential. And by the way, that was zoned for single-family residential. He mentioned Summit, which is a sort of a small site, high density, which I don't think compares here, but that was over fifty units per acre. He mentioned Shrewsbury and Bridgewater. I was not involved in those projects, I'm familiar with them. Shrewsbury was about thirty to the acre. Bridgewater was actually slightly less here, it was seventeen units per acre. One of the communities I represent in Morris County is Morris Plains. We recently approved and had a project built, Arbor Terrace. That was at thirty units per acre. And probably the closest project, well, I know Dan is familiar with, was Artist Senior Living in West Windsor, where I was the artist's planning consultant, and that's a smaller site, smaller number of units, but the density, there's nineteen units to the acre. The point I'm trying to make is that for this kind of use in this context, eighteen to nineteen units per acre is not sort of out of line, and particularly in a mixed-use area, that one that's not surrounded predominantly by just single-family homes. By the way, and I know Dan cited, and maybe I'm reading the zoning wrong, but the conditional use zoning for assisted living nursing homes is a little complicated, as he, I think Dan is acknowledging, but as I read that zoning, where assisted living facilities are permitted as a conditional use, and I think, as he mentioned, there are, I think, four zones, including the OR zones where it is permitted, there is a hundred-unit maximum, and there is a maximum density of beds, of twenty-five beds per acre, in the conditional use section of the ordinance. This proposal would come within each of those thresholds. From an impact standpoint, minimal impacts on municipal services. This project is fully taxable, no schoolchildren are generated. Applicant will contract out for emergency ambulance or transfer services to limit impacts on the municipality as well. So I guess, in summary, while there are always land use impacts associated with a development proposal, and particularly one involving D-variances, I don't believe these impacts, given the context, rise to the level of being substantially detrimental in nature. The operative word is substantial. Every project has an impact, and it may have detrimental impacts. The test is whether they rise to being substantially detrimental in nature. I would just make one final point. I mentioned that I had done some research on the township's status in terms of its compliance with its affordable housing obligation. And my understanding, and I had discussions with the, one of the, I think there are three housing consultants actually for the township, I had discussions with one of the housing consultants, as well as the court-appointed special master in Princeton. My understanding is Princeton is currently in settlement negotiations with Fair Share Housing Center, but there was a housing plan that was prepared, it was presented to the public in May of two thousand and eighteen, and I, all I can say, you know, who knows what's going to happen with the plan, but all I can say is I reviewed that plan. This site was included within that housing plan specifically for assisted living facility with a total of eighty... with a total of eighty-nine units, nine of which would be affordable. And as you may recall, an earlier iteration of this project was eighty-nine units. We're now at eighty-four units. And I think they were taking the ten percent of the units to get the nine units, whereas, based on the state requirement, the ten percent Medicaid requirement is based on the number of beds. And with, with a maximum of a hundred and ten beds, which we would be proposing, Princeton would qualify for eleven as opposed to nine of those units. So, look, who knows where the settlement negotiations are going to go? But all I can say is, at least to date, the township planning consultant, housing consultants, believe that this site was suitable for roughly the same development alternative that this applicant basically is advancing before this, before this board.
So assisted living was written into that plan, albeit a draft plan. And to your knowledge, that has not changed currently?
That, to my knowledge, and, and let's face it, there are settlement discussions, anything, but I'm not aware of any plan that has taken this property out of that.
It sounds like the professionals for the town at least have reviewed it in that vein.
That's my understanding of it. So the step three, as Dan mentioned, is imposition of reasonable conditions to sort of lessen impacts. As I mentioned, number one, I don't think that the D variance will create significant impacts, particularly on any of the immediately adjacent single-family homes due to the retention of the woods and the, and the setback to the closest residents. The building is being set back a good ninety feet from Terhune Road. I know there's issues with regard to what we can and can't do, Dan, in terms of buffering in the front. I think that's something that can be addressed at, at site plan. In my mind, there's opportunity to do some landscaping, basically, to soften the look. And I, and admittedly, the facade is lengthy. It's a lengthy facade when we went from a three to a two-story building. But based on the architecture, which has been submitted to the board, a pitched roof design, varied roof lines, and you could see the facade has been articulated into bays or sections in order to sort of soften the look of the building. And again, this is not the site plan application. And obviously, if we get past the D variances, we will, you and your professionals will have another bite in terms of buffering or landscaping or other types of conditions that could be set in place to lessen impacts. Step four is the balancing test, weighing the public interest against potential negative impacts. Again, we have a use that ranks high on the scale of public interest uses. It addresses a local need. We've dealt with the impacts and the mitigation measures. In my opinion, on balance, I think the positives outweigh the negatives per the seeker balancing tests. And for that reason, I believe that the D variances for the assisted living facility can and actually should be granted. And then lastly, because I've been talking for too long, just, I don't know whether you want me to cover the C variances. We're bifurcated, I'm happy to kind of address them.
Counsel, what is your pleasure? We testified that they're subsumed in the D variance, but.
I mean, I can, I can address them briefly.
We're happy to do it. You raised that issue at the last hearing. And whatever the board's pleasure and council's pleasure, if you would like us to go through them, we certainly will.
You're seeking them tonight, though, right? Under the position that they're all subsumed? If they give you the use variance, you're getting everything?
So I'll, I'll provide some tests, and I won't belabor it. I don't think they're significant variances. And as I mentioned, like the other D variances, I do believe they're largely subsumed within the D for the Price versus Hameji case. I think they're largely C two variances in nature, flexible C variances. I think there are at least three purposes of the statute that would be promoted if these variances are granted. And they would be purpose A, which is to guide development in a manner that promotes the public welfare. Purpose G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses. And as I mentioned, to, the last purpose, to encourage senior citizen housing construction. So briefly, the signage, I think what we're seeking is largely inconsequential and appropriate for this use, which again, wasn't contemplated by the zoning. We have a slightly lesser setback. Basically, the sign we want to put at the corner to basically maximize the visibility. And I think we're proposing sixteen square feet, which is modest in relation to ten square feet, which is the standard. I certainly don't see any detrimental impacts associated with having an identifying sign at the corner. The, the parking, this is really technical. We don't meet the township standard in the zone, but that's not really meant for assisted living. It doesn't reflect the fact, as I mentioned, that residents don't drive. We're actually providing six more spaces than what RSIS basically stipulates for this use. So I think there, certainly there's a basis to grant that relief. There's a setback, and I think it's only in the, the parking setback's twenty feet. We need it except for the, a couple of spaces, which are basically right here. This corner piece, which abuts the large wooded area, the shopping center. And I think on the C two variance there, it's only several spaces. It basically backs up against what's likely to be woods. And certainly, we're providing greater than the twenty-foot parking setback to that adjoining residential property. So I think, all told, in the aggregate, you know, the benefits would outweigh the, the detriments. There's a variance for the parking between the building and the street. I think this is kind of both a C one and a C two variance. By moving the building back, and we don't have a lot of depth on this lot, by moving the building back really basically says we have to put some parking in the front. It's also convenient. It's also to the building. The bulk of it is sort of to the side of the building and in the first portion of the finger segment of the property. Again, you can't certainly meet both goals of pushing the building back and then trying to put parking behind the building. So I think then this is a, clearly a case where the benefits without that weigh the detriment. And I think the issue in terms of impacts really comes down to coming up with an appropriate landscaping plan at site plan to mitigate any undue visual impacts by having that parking or some amount of that parking in the, in the front yard. And then lastly, there is coverage, we're slightly above the coverage. Forty percent is allowed, we're about forty-three and a half percent. I think this is relatively de minimis. I don't know if you, us in this room can tell the difference between forty and forty-three and a half percent coverage. I think the key here is, even for this use, you're still basically maintaining well over fifty-five percent of the property as either green space or pervious space, which I think for assisted living use in this context is more than reasonable. And lastly, I don't see any substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan. Again, recognizing that the zone plan is meant for another use if these C variances are, are granted.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
You will finish your case now, is that right?
Unless you have additional questions for Mr. Phillips? Yes.
Not at this, uh, do we have?
Yeah, I have some questions. Questions?
Mr. Floyd.
Oh, sorry, I didn't notice.
You mentioned the draft settlement plan that had the possibility of assisted living.
Right. By the way, just for the record, so I'm clear, I don't know if there is a draft settlement or not. I don't even know if there's a draft settlement place. I do know that there are settlement discussions that are taking place between the municipality and Fair Share Housing Center.
Yes, there, there are.
You probably know more than me.
Regardless of that. Yeah, I know Kevin Walsh very well. But regardless, right now, the, it's not zoned for assisted living.
That's correct.
And if the town wanted to include it in the settlement, what would they have to do?
What, based on my experience, and I, I represent municipalities on affordable housing. I've been to fairness hearings and compliance hearings, represent municipalities. My understanding is, is that if the, if there is a settlement agreement, the next step would be that there would be a fairness hearing before the court?
I'm sorry. And it was a loaded question. Next step is they would have to zone for it.
Well, yeah, I'm going to get to that.
They'd have to change the zoning.
What the judge will typically do at the fairness hearing, if everybody's on board, the judge will give the municipality a hundred and twenty days to put into effect implementing zoning. That will take place. And then there's a final compliance hearing some point after that.
So that, that would be the town's responsibility, not the zoning board's.
That's correct.
Another question. And you did cover some of it as you were talking about the density and the hundred units, meeting others, other areas that are zoned as assisted living as a possible use. But what about the FAR? Does this proposal meet the restrictions on the ASL sites around the town?
Good question. I attempted to look into that. The problem is, in terms of many, if not most, of the other comparables that I cited, in terms of other assisted living facilities that I was involved in, most of those were.
I'm sorry, I'm not asking that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I just ask, and I, I can direct it this way.
Okay.
If need be, the town has sites that they have zoned. Assisted living as a conditional use.
Yeah, the FAR is lower, I think it's either somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent on those areas. And Dan can correct me, but I think depending on the zone, it's lower than we're proposing here.
Whereas the hundred units does.
We fit the hundred in the bed.
Fit that.
We meet those thresholds here, yes.
Okay, you didn't mention that, it didn't fit FAR laws.
Yes.
Can I just, on the beds, I think it's twenty-five beds per acre. Four and a half acres would be a hundred and twelve and a half beds.
Correct.
You're proposing a hundred and twenty-four beds?
One ten.
One ten, so it's down to one ten.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It would commit to one ten.
I guess you, again, I know you said it, but you don't, you don't have any specific demand numbers for this area.
I, I have not undertaken any independent market demand analysis.
Okay.
But Mr. Leon addressed that, we believe. And if you have additional questions for Mr. Leon.
Clearly, he brought it up, that's why.
Understood, yeah.
Okay.
Just trying to answer.
I just cited Mr. Lung's testimony in light of the first step in CICA and then just added some additional information based on my own experience. But that stands on its own. Trust me, I wouldn't have asked him if he didn't bring it up.
Understood.
You have now finished, is that right?
Anything else? That's all we have, Mr. Jim.
That's all you've got. What I'd like to do is to take a five-minute break at this time. And then there are people in the audience who wish to address this case, is that right?
Thanks, Lawrence, thanks.
I don't know how many of you there are, but five minutes apiece for questions, statements that you want to make. And basically, if you made the point at a previous meeting, there's no real point in making it again because it's already in the record. Okay? So we'll have a five-minute break.
I think it's size of the building. The FAR, it's just way too big of a building for the site. That means they're going to go for the use now, or is something, if they don't get the use, then they're going to.
Does the use have to do with what you're saying, or does the, the density, or is it more, they're not, whether it's.
Well, he's saying it's inherently beneficial use, so it's not really discretionary. You know, we can consider that. But the biggest deal, I mean, is just the intensity of use, the FAR. It's so excessive that it dictates a whole.
So we can address that, Jim?
Huh?
We can address that.
Yeah, yeah, very much so. Because that's one of the factors, if you say it's inherently beneficial, you say something, and it's possible. And that's, that's a side of the building. Yes, it will, it will have, but the size. That's the biggest.
But is the location, the unique location for better use, not something that's.
See, that's it, they're saying, they're saying that the inherent beneficial power is trapped, but it's not doing that. Because it's, it's, it's a public purpose use in a sense.
But it departs the community of that opportunity.
It does, it does, it departs it because there's no other sites. And we can discuss that, but I think the biggest issue is that the size is, this is too big of a building. And with that, you could cut the site.
Slap?
How's it going in your part of the neighborhood?
Yep, yep. We're into winter. Where I live, Marin County.
My daughter used to go to San Jose.
San Jose?
Campbell.
Campbell, yeah.
I mean, I know that's eleven hours.
Yeah, I used to spend a lot of time down there, though.
Really?
Yeah, well, I, I did, I used to be in business development and high-tech, I was in Silicon Valley.
She started working for Ivy House, I don't know.
Oh, okay, wow, good for her. That's my property now, though, probably.
She's twenty-five.
Yeah. It's not bad, though, I mean, Campbell, yeah, she's young, yeah. Campbell's, I mean, Campbell's nice. And it's, I mean, it's dense down there, but it's, it's, you're close to a lot of open space.
Yeah.
Get to, over San Cruz is half an hour away. It's great. Scott, have you been out to Missouri?
I've been out, we went out to Maine, to go to Francisco now. And then I was there. I was there for a couple of things, but I spent my three days there.
Yes. Busy?
Yeah, she's, I mean, she's in UC and she's lived in New York, so how, I mean, hard on you.
World is a D C here.
How many people?
Campbell was a nice.
Even the children.
Come in.
You'll have children, you'll have lots of kids.
That's Mexican, it's like, it's like, it's not trying to put all this together for you, okay? Lifer's got it, there was still a lot of portrait. Campbell, in San Jose, I mean, it's all kind of pulled together, it's like, Tino. Scott was a poor guy.
I haven't gotten.
Good game, a lot, yeah. Sunnyvale, Campbell. Yeah, yeah, we always know the odds.
I think it's like crazy. So like, I called the first, like, four, they were like, radio, right, so I came. They want me to, or like, all the action, actions, like, you know, very, I have no idea what's going on, we're just right now, we'll find out.
Is it a meeting that a five run seventh that works?
And it's four.
Eight and two socks. What matters, it's like, like, I love baseball, I like to play off baseball, like, every match, every pitch is just like, stress and ease. Football's great. Like, it's just, you know, everything is, it's not as intense.
We're starting again? Yeah, yeah. Oops. Derek is here, Cody is here. Our attorney is here. Okay, so we'll start again. And I believe there are four. Okay, so we'll start again, and I believe there are four members of the audience who wish to speak. If you'll come forward to the lectern, make sure the microphone is turned on, then our attorney has to get your name and where you live, and you have to swear to be truthful, and then you can go. There's a little switch that's hidden halfway down.
Hi, I'm Katia Tanik, two five two Terhune Road.
And ma'am, do you swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So, my husband and I are, we are right on the corner of Terhune and Harrison, so we're very concerned because we are right there, we can see it from our house, and not only that, we've been residents of Princeton for a long time. We do care about this town, about the community, about what happens in the future. And we understand that assisted living facility is a great concept, it's a great idea, but unfortunately, we don't think it's a good fit for this site. This site is zoned senior market zone, which is independent living, where people can walk to the doctor's office, to the shopping center, they can use the bus, they don't have to drive, it's so perfect for seniors. While assisted living facility residents, they will most likely, well, they're not independent, so they won't be taking, they won't be using this site to its full advantage. Location is so great, I just don't think, I just think that it will be a waste to give this site to an assisted living facility, even though it was mentioned that it's an inherently beneficial use, which I understand, it makes sense. But senior market zone will be a lot more beneficial in this case, and I just wanted to mention that this particular community, we know each other, neighbors know each other, it's like a small community. In Princeton Shopping Center, they host different concerts for people, where you can bring your blanket in the summer, and you can lie down and listen to the music. It's a very nice neighborhood, I just don't see how an assisted living facility will fit in there. And I think that we really need senior market zone here, not an assisted living facility. And if we do allow this to happen, if we grant the variance, I think that, I think that Princeton as a town will forever miss out, miss out on an opportunity to provide senior market housing for the seniors. I think it's not fair, and we shouldn't take it away from potential seniors who would live there. That's my point. I think we should stick with the zone of senior market zone, since an assisted living facility is not even a conditional use in that zone, and that's what we should fight for. I understand that this case might go to court, or I don't know what will happen, but I think we shouldn't be frightened, and we should stick with the senior market zone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No capping, please.
My name is Athanasios Panagiotopoulos, I have it written down, I live on three eighty-nine Terhune Road, which is the house next to the one just not shown.
Sir, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So I have been to at least a couple of these meetings, and I am not a legal expert, not a planning expert. I'm a PhD in chemical engineering, but I'm really very surprised at the tone of some of the statements made by Sunrise. I was at the previous meeting where the plans were even more monstrous than they are now, but I think that still, the negative impact on the neighborhood, the negative impact on Princeton is really huge, and is coming from destroying the character of the neighborhood that's not shown on the map, which goes to the east of the photograph there, is all residential, it's all low-key friendly. Some of our neighbors are here, have been here through these hearings, and I think their presence really comes from their strong sense, and my strong sense, that allowing this large facility that does not add real residents to the area, does not utilize the proximity to the shopping center, the proximity to the medical facilities for people who are there and able to walk and participate, will have a real great detrimental effect on the neighborhood. And it's a lost opportunity, as the previous person who spoke mentioned, in that the current zoning for the area, senior living, is very appropriate, and comes with constraints on the density, on the setback, on the height, that are appropriate. And I really urge the board to keep those constraints and reject the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yen Lee Hwan, I live on one eighty-eight Grover Avenue.
Ma'am, do you swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. My English is not good, so I understand, I mean, misunderstand something when someone says talk. But I heard one thing about a traffic pattern, the gentleman said he did a research when the school and university was not in session. So he made the assumption, once the school and university is in session, it's going to be ten percent change. I personally don't feel that you reflect the reality. And also for the, the D variance change, I see the, the number is like this big, big gap. So, I mean, I have been living in Princeton more than ten years, so I see the landscape, like, the huge change right now in the town. There are so old houses, it's tear down, and the new house built, and I can see the neighborhood becomes so crowded because the houses are really close to each other. So I just feel this variance, this is the reason for the restriction at the beginning. So such a big gap in the variance request, I just feel it's going to be, if once it's approved, it's going to be a better, like, example for the future, future request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ohio, Adam Bierman, one ninety-three Grover Avenue.
Mr. Bierman, do you swear or affirm-
Call me Ad- Adam, it's fine.
Thank you.
This is also from my friend Janet, she had to leave. Just, though not empirical evidence, we talked to people at the Princeton Senior Resource Center, and they were just saying that Acorn Glen and other Stonebridge are not filled up, they can't, actually don't, they're not close to full occupancy, so I don't know if it's really needed, even though they offer dementia care, from what I understand, Acorn Glen does, and again, they haven't filled up their rooms. And two, I'm just curious, maybe you touched on this, the demographics, are they based on a five-year projection, I mean, three years? Twenty fifteen, twenty, twenty, oh, by, what do you mean, twenty fifteen, the demographic, oh, in twenty fifteen? But do you have any projection for the next five or ten years, or, I know, well, I guess, you know, from what I hear, demographics after five years aren't that reliable at all, but do you have anything for twen- for like, till twenty twenty-three, or anything? Okay, thank you. So just for the record, again, what I've heard, Acorn Glen has not been filled to capacity, and it's pretty close to the proposed site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kip Cherry, twenty-four Dempsey, I live right off of Terhune on the other side, and I'm going to offer a different perspective because I've just been through, oh, I'm sorry.
As I do, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I've just been through an experience with my mother-in-law, who was died at ninety-four, she was in an assisted living facility in Newtown, and so we had to drive there all the time. And we didn't, we were very concerned about visiting regularly, and I see a facility such as this right in the heart of Princeton as actually an opportunity for many people to visit their loved ones regularly. Unfortunately, when people get into these facilities, they often are visited by nobody, nobody visits them anymore, and it's very sad. I sort of see this facility as a commercial facility, it's right next to the shopping center, a commercial facility. So I don't see it really as part of the neighborhood, it's part of the shopping center area. And I see the shopping center benefiting because I think the staff working there will be going to the shopping center regularly, during lunch hour, after work, that sort of thing. And I don't see that much more traffic because I, the residents themselves will not be going anywhere. They'll be staying in the facility unless someone takes them out. So it'll be just the staff moving in and out, thirty-five people, I think, was the number. So I just offer a different perspective. The site's going to be developed one way or another, and I just don't see that much difference between seniors or assisted living in terms of the people that are there and, and what they do for the town, and I think the town does need assisted living that's handy, and so that people actually go to it, thank you.
Thank you. Have I seen all of the people who wish to make any comments? Oh.
My name is Victor Jalala, I live at three eighty North Harrison Street.
Mr. Jalala, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
I have lived and owned the property at three eighty North Harrison Street for the last forty-one years. During those forty-one years, I've been to planning board meetings, I've been to neighborhood meetings to discuss the development of that particular property, which is probably one of the most valuable pieces of property left in Princeton. Some of the proposals that have come up over the years on that site are high-density affordable housing, a seven-eleven type of convenience store, a gas station, and a number of other things that have come up that have been knocked down over the years by the community, by the planning board, whatever. This proposal, in my opinion, is probably one of the best things I've seen in forty-one years because it meets several of our goals in this community, and that is, number one, to meet some of our affordable housing requirements, which, according to what I'm hearing tonight, through the Medicaid beds, we satisfy approximately eight to eleven beds that we may have in terms of our affordable housing requirements. That's approximately ten percent of your number of beds that are planned for that area. So therefore, I support this idea because I have to look at that every day, every day I have to look at that. And at some point, I may be a user of that facility because I'm an aging baby boomer. And it would be nice to look at my house from the other side of the street to see what will happen to that house because within our neighborhood, within five-minute walking distance of my house, we've had at least twenty-five houses that have sold between five hundred, four hundred, and six hundred thousand dollars that have been knocked down, and mega mansions have been put in the neighborhood. And I agree with Kip Cherry that this structure is part of the existing shopping center. It is a commercial property, it's a ratable that will come into this community. At some point, if we do not accept a proposal like this, which may be the least of the evil proposals that have come up to us, at some point, the court is going to force us to do something more that will be shoved down our throats, and we will have to live with it. And that will increase the traffic and the parking spaces and whatever in that particular area if it does eventually become high-density, multiple-use, senior or whatever type of housing. So I support this concept, it's been going on for almost three years now, let's give them an opportunity to complete the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. I see no one. Oh, Mr.-
Yeah, I just wanted to offer a comment regarding the town's affordable housing plan, which is confidential, and I don't think it's been shared with the public. I haven't seen it, I don't think any of the professionals have, but the site already has an affordable housing component, it has a twenty percent set aside for sale units, and a fifteen percent set aside under the current, for rentals, under the current zoning that's in effect on that site under the RSM, I just wanted to enter that into the record.
So do you have any knowledge, if I may, do you have any knowledge, I know you've never seen the plan, but do you have any knowledge to confirm or deny what Mr. Phillips testified to, that, that the assisted living is, has been suggested to be in the plan, albeit not in a written document?
I don't have any knowledge that it's in the plan, all I was asked questions on is how many potential units were in the affordable housing plan under your application.
So you don't know whether it's in the plan or not?
No.
Okay. So then, do you want to make any closing comments?
We have closed, we submit we've satisfied our burden under the state statutes and the local ordinances, and Mr. Chairman, thank you for your consideration, and your board professionals have accommodated us on the many iterations of the plan, it's been a long road, and we've rested. Thank you.
And we'll go into executive session. What think is that?
Well, I, as I said earlier, I'm concerned about just the bulk of the building. I mean, it's, it's, as represented on the site plan.
Steve, can you talk into your mic, because we can't hear you.
I thought I was. Okay, I'm, I'm very concerned about the bulk, the size of the building. It requires, well, there are two things, number one, obviously, the length of the building, it's five hundred and forty-something feet long, two stories high, it meets the height requirement, but to, to get, to get to the density they're looking for, it requires, as I said before, clearing the site, not only for the building, but the parking. Maybe, and maybe not, they can mitigate the size of the building with landscaping, I do feel that everything that's there is going to come out. And, and I think that the, the overall bulk of the building is just way too large for that existing site. I am concerned also about just the, the fact that we, in my opinion, are taking the last good, only remaining senior independent living facility or site, basically off the market. I think when it was, I'm concerned about that, but more so just the size of this proposal.
Well, the site was specifically designed for the independent housing.
And it's suited for that.
And excluded this type of development.
Well, I think early on, earlier on in the testimony, Mr. Lang testified that the residents wouldn't be walking to the shopping center, they don't go out by themselves, and so they're not, they don't really take advantage of the uniqueness of the site, the medical offices, walking to the medical offices, walking to transportation, walking to the shopping center, which is all part of a, of a senior market rate apartment. So that's another concern, but the bulk is a bigger issue. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I guess I kind of wanted, I compiled my notes that I've been taking over the last three meetings into a framework that kind of follows the SICA balancing test, as was articulated, and as is the standard for inherently beneficial use. The first piece of it is establishing the magnitude of the public interest at stake, and I think the term magnitude is particularly important in this context. There are other similar facilities nearby, I think that Sunrise has demonstrated- I think that Sunrise has demonstrated that there is a need, but it's a question as to the degree of the need. Based on their supply and demand explanation, they're showing that the assisted living and memory care qualified caregiver penetration is 5.4%, and they typically look at a 6.5% penetration percentage as being kind of like saturated or at that level. I think that's what the testimony was. And there isn't a huge differential between those two figures, 5.4 and 6.5. I think that they've made a business decision to invest, so they believe there is a need, but it's a question as to the degree. And I don't think that the degree of the need, the magnitude of the public interest is really, you know, particularly convincing from my vantage point. Also-
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I clarify just real quick on that point? So when I said-
You're not invited to talk at this point. You listen to what we say, you can be invited later.
Also, there's the case of Weiner versus Zoning Board, of Adjustment of Glassboro, which was cited in the SICA case, which, in which the court stated that the developer had no absolute right to construct a project of any size and shape in a district selected by it merely on the basis that senior citizen housing promotes public welfare, the negative criteria have to be met. So, you know, looking at the detrimental impacts, then, turning to that, first of all, from a FAR perspective, you know, the building mass is quite large, and reasonable minds can differ as to whether it does in fact overpower the site. I would submit that it does. I think that other people might submit that it doesn't, but that's a degree question again. But the bigger issue for me is how this would impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. There's one lot in the zone that we're talking about here, the, you know, senior market zone. And this would essentially be a rezoning of that entire district. It's not like where you have a single lot in a larger zone and you're agreeing to a use variance on that particular lot. We're essentially spot zoning if we agree to this. And that's not something that is vested within the zoning board. It's something that is with the council and with the planning, the planning board itself. So I would submit that that is a very negative aspect of the zone, you know, negatively impacts the zone plan on that basis. The third piece of it is, can the imposition of conditions reduce the impacts? I don't think that you can impose conditions as it relates to a use variance to mitigate that aspect of we're rezoning an entire district. And then you weigh the positive and the negative against each other, and you need to answer the question, does this substantially impair the intent of the zone plan and zoning? And, you know, the question is, where's the tipping point on that? And that's kind of where my head's at.
I have a few comments. Obviously, I really wanted to hear some demand numbers. I didn't hear them. Like, and one of the other board members asked too, regarding vacancy rate of the competition, someone mentioned rent levels, could be amenities, could be whether they have a waiting list. I think wanting to build an assisted living is not in of itself proof of an overwhelming demand because you can, if the numbers work for you at an 83% occupancy, they work because half of the equation is costs. If you're good at keeping costs down in assisted living, you can make a project work. If you miss the boat, it will go under. It's a very well-known fact, so yet, I haven't seen the evidence that there is a need. I don't believe in my 10-mile radius that many, if any, of the facilities are full. I've had some experience going around to them and looking for a place, you know, for a relative, so I know that from experience. So, and then also, I'd link that to inherently beneficial use, which I can understand hospitals, nursing homes, and assisted living. But if there's not the demand, if supply is greater than the demand, then the inherent, the strength of the inherently beneficial use drops to me. I think our planners' memo strongly pointed out that the town wanted this site for independent senior. I think this, approving this will damage zoning. It's not our place, the master plan, the 2017 reexamination that's mentioned in the report, that again stressed that this should be an independent senior site. So for me, it's clear that this would be a detriment on the use side. And the town has zoned four other sites for a permitted use or a conditional use of assisted living and specifically omitted it from this site. I think it is up to the town to rezone it, if they want to rezone it, and not for me to give a use variance.
Okay. Any, have you had a comment?
I could see an inherently beneficial use in having a facility like this in the fabric of the community as opposed to out somewhere that you have to drive a half hour, you know. I don't think it's the same thing to have it in a peripheral area that is not within a town, but I do think there's a substantial deviance from the floor area ratio, and I'm wondering, in the memo where it was questioned, or it was noted that the floor area ratio needs to be recalculated, is what we're looking at not the correct floor area ratio?
She's questioning, we have a requirement, any area over seven feet in an attic would be calculated as FAR.
May we be invited to address this question, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Lang?
So we looked at that in the, so we looked at that, in the area of the attic space that was over seven feet was approximately 10% of the floor below, so it wouldn't meet that one-third threshold to count.
I think that's only on residential properties you get the one-third. I mean, it is what it is. The plans are what they are.
Certainly.
It's FAR, but it-
I'm not sure the requirement applied to an assisted living. The whole requirement seems to only apply to a single or two-family home. I didn't see where it independently applied to something else, so if it applies, I would think the one-third applies with it, and we are under that threshold.
Okay.
I don't think it applies, but it, if you approve it, it is what's on the drawings is what the bulk of the building is. So, I mean, the numbers may be off by 10%.
Okay. And I did have another question. I think this might have come up before. In terms of how long the property has been zoned for senior housing and not been developed, I'm just wondering how long it's sat with that zoning designation.
Yes, I think it was, I sent Dan some information from the, it was '96, I believe.
Okay. So that's one thing I question, is I agree that it's perfectly situated for independent living for seniors. I'm just, I question why nobody has found it, a property to be developed in that manner. It hasn't been, and there must be a reason.
Anyone else wish to make a comment?
No, that I have different or unique to say, other than I will echo that I, I, it's a very big building, but I think more what has caught my attention is the idea of the uniqueness of that location for housing, which admittedly has yet to been built there, so that is a question. But once it is built on by something else, that opportunity will go away forever. And I think that's something to be, to be really concerned about. And that would not just affect the neighborhood, it would, you know, it would be a loss to the whole town, really. I mean, in some ways, in the way that it's being described and how that space would be used, it might as well be a storage, you know, a bunch of storage lockers because it's not going to be relating to the area, and it could be put somewhere else. So.
Anything to say? Do you wish to, do you have a comment? Okay. All right, so, um-
So, Mr. Chairman, may we now clarify the one question that one of your board members had?
Yeah.
So just for the record, for clarification, the thresholds I mentioned to you were not the thresholds of what we would consider saturation. Rather, that was the average of our existing successful portfolio. So rather, it's an indicator of, are we within the general bounds of what would eventually be successful? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we wish to make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll make a motion that we deny the application, based on the conversations we've had, the bulk, you know, the size of the building itself, the other points that were brought up by the board members, the uniqueness of this site, and the fact that, that, you know, the building is just too big. Too big for that site as proposed.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second, or is there any further discussion we need? Hearing no request. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Strieber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvani?
Yes.
Chairman, voice.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I assume that a yes was to him. He didn't clarify that point. Okay. Good. So we are finished, I think, with all we need for this meeting.